Okay, Mr. Marshall, we have 6:33. Amherst Media is with us. There is a quorum of the board. You are the co-host of this meeting. I think we're good to go.
Okay, thanks Pam.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of December 18th, 2024. My name is Doug Marshall and is Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I am calling this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021 and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is accessible on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting. Or go to the Planning Board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship or despite our best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Coldem.
I am here.
Fred Hartwell.
I am here.
We've been advised that Lawrence Klutz will be absent tonight. He's got illness in the household. Jesse Major.
I am present.
Hi Doug Marshall, I'm present. Karen, or rather, Karin Winter.
I'm present.
And Johanna Newman has notified us she will be late, and I don't see her yet here. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause to fix the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment, and I will call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the Planning Board Chair. At that time, please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the Planning Board Chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is minutes. Time is 6:36. And although there were no minutes included in the packet, I know that Pam distributed the November 6th minutes a couple of days ago. Board members, did you all get enough of a chance to look at those minutes to vote on them, accept them, or edit them tonight? Or do we need to delay that till the next meeting? Anybody have any thoughts about that? Jesse?
I will confess, I haven't had a chance to look at them, so I would abstain if we voted.
Okay. Anybody else? Did anyone look at them? Bruce?
I read them, but I was not in attendance, so I would abstain for that reason.
All right, I'm seeing a pattern here. Karen or Fred, any thoughts on the matter, or shall we just decide to wait on these minutes until the next meeting? Karen?
I vote, we wait on them. Wait.
Okay. All right. So Pam, do you think you could include those minutes in the next packet?
Yes, I will.
And we will do those and whatever else gets finalized at our next meeting, which is the 8th?
Of January, yes.
Yeah, so we're not meeting the night of New Year's Day. I'm sure that's a relief to all of you. So we're delaying a week and it'll be the 8th, probably at 6:30, I would guess. All right, we'll move along to second item on the agenda, which is public comment. At this point, I usually read the names of the participants I can see on the attendees list. So the minutes that the participants I can see are Becca Briggs, Christine Brestrup, Pamela Rooney, Tom Reedy, and just one name, Walker. All right.
Mr. Marshall, I see Johanna has arrived.
Oh, there she is. Yeah, okay.
I'm gonna say 6.
6:38 or 6:39?
6:39. Thanks y'all.
All right, Johanna, just so you know, we decided to not discuss the November 6th minutes tonight because not enough people had read them. So we will discuss them at our meeting on January 8th. All right. So, members of the public, now is the time for public comment about items not on tonight's agenda. So not related to the overlay district, not related to Amity Drive, the Amity Drive project, not related to accessory dwelling units, those kinds of things. Anybody want to speak now? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, so we'll go on to item 3. So, this is a public hearing continued from October 30th, November 20th, and December 4th. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding a University Drive overlay district. To consider amending the zoning bylaw by adopting the University Drive overlay district as Article 17 and amending the official zoning map by adding the University Drive overlay district, the overlay district would include properties on the east and west sides of University Drive between Northampton Road and Amity Street and establishes its own requirements for only mixed-use buildings, including dimensional standards, standards and conditions, and design guidelines. Do we have any board member disclosure? All right. So I guess Nate, you're gonna act as our applicant with the opening presentation tonight, I assume? And I know you distributed a markup version of the bylaw, so take it away.
Sure, thanks. Hi everyone, Nate Malloy, a planner with the town. The, you know, staffs presented this to the, you know, Planning Board and the Community Resources Committee, so we were in front of the CRC last night. There were comments provided by some members. I walked through that. I think those were also in the packet. And then I distributed this evening a version with track changes to show updates. And so, you know, from our previous version until now, you know, the changes are really encapsulated in that document that was sent out later, and I can go through that if you want. And so really, the Planning Board's role, you know, is to make recommendations to Town Council. And so what was referred to was, you know, the kind of the original version. And with this new version, you can, you know, recommend these changes or continue to make changes or modifications. But, you know, in the end, you could recommend something to Town Council, whether it was the original or, you know, ones with changes. Really, the new additions have been, you know, in response to comments by the Planning Board and the CRC in terms of, you know, some of it is to buffer the neighboring residential neighborhood on Charles Lane, to clarify if more than one building could, you know, constructed or occupy one property, you know, clarity on the setbacks and some of the open space requirements. And so, you know, the general kind of purpose and goal of the overlay hasn't changed, just really just making some changes in response to comments. The owner of the Big Y property, you know, did say they're supportive of the overlay and they're supportive of 100% ground floor retail, so that's been changed and identified in the updated version. And just generally consistency of terms. So, you know, in the previous version, we had a few different terms for like the front of a building, called it street-facing facade or front facade. And so really, it's the street-facing facade. And so as the overlay only regulates mixed-use buildings, every building on a property, whether it's along the street or a secondary building behind the building, is going to have a street-facing facade. And that street-facing facade needs to have the mixed-use component and needs to follow the design standards. And so, you know, I think we've made changes in the overlay to address that. So, you know, even if someone proposes a second mixed-use building, it needs to be a mixed-use building, it needs to have the mixed-use component, and it needs to meet the design standards, and that's not waivable. And so I think there had been some questions like, oh, could you move the mixed-use to the front building and not have a mixed-use building? And that just becomes an apartment building, and that would be regulated with the underlying zoning. So, you know, as an overlay zone, this really is for mixed-use buildings. The base zoning in the district is office park or limited business. And so if someone wanted to put a mixed-use building in using the overlay and then try to do a different building, like another office building using the base zoning, they could do that. So there could be then two buildings on the site, one using the overlay and one using the base zoning. We've clarified in the overlay that if they were gonna do that, it's the permanent granting authority, likely the Planning Board, that would review the lot and building coverages, which then couldn't exceed the lot and building coverage of the overlay. So there is some flexibility there, but it's not as if someone would come in and say, I'm gonna propose an office building and then use any part of the overlay. It's really only for mixed-use buildings. So it's just, it's an opportunity for mixed-use buildings to be permitted with flexibility. And I guess I could walk through the Word document if that is the easiest way to kind of go through this.
I think that'd be a good idea.
All right. Is that generally visible for everyone?
Looks good to me.
All right, yeah, so the, you know, the, like I said, the kind of purpose and the description of it hasn't changed. Bruce, I see you have a hand raised?
Yes, Bruce.
This is a kind of, not exactly a point of order, but certainly a point of clarification. This is the document that you sent out most recently, yes, this afternoon. The question I have, Nate, is does this reflect changes made following the CRC hearing last night?
Yeah, so the, previously, so not last night, but the first hearing of the CRC, there were some questions, and then there were some follow-up questions sent by members of CRC. You know, there was a few pages of questions. And so based on last night's discussion and then those questions, these changes reflect some of those, you know, comments and everything. So it really does take into consideration the previous meetings of the CRC and of the Planning Board.
So I spent some time today looking through both Pam Rooney's page comments and also Mandy Jo Hanekes. And Mandy Jo's particularly have got a legal, these are very, very fine-pointed. So I felt mostly that that would be something for you. But so to the extent of what you just said, should I conclude that we don't really need to spend too much time fussing about whether the comments that are made, particularly in Mandy Jo's more particular set of notes, can we kind of assume that you and Mandy Jo have taken action on this? And unless we have particular objection to anything in there, we should just assume that it's largely taken care of?
Yeah, so we can go through this draft right here, and then, you know, last night at the CRC, this wasn't available, but I walked through every comment by Mandy Jo and Pam. So we went, you know, comment by comment, line by line, and discussed them, so.
Okay, good. Well, I'm not inclined to do that again, then, me personally, anyway.
Yeah, I mean, if we wanted to, we could review those. And so, you know, I think it addresses everything, and there still might be, you know, questions or areas that aren't as clear, right? And so, you know, it was nice about having, say, Mandy and Pam and others that hadn't been looking at it so closely is that they have a fresh perspective. And so, you know, I know what I wanted to say, and I maybe think it's saying that, but maybe it really isn't, right? So maybe some section isn't as clear as what I think it is, and so.
Okay. Well, you should do what you proposed to do. I only interrupted to, so I know what the context of the discussion was going to be. Thank you.
So yeah, so this is saying what Doug had read as part of the hearing notice. You know, the, you know, we're setting up new standards and conditions with the overlay. The use chart 3.325 doesn't apply. So, you know, there's two places in the bylaw where mixed-use buildings are referenced. One is in the use chart, so that doesn't apply, those standards and conditions. But the definition in Article 12 is still applies. It's kind of a generic definition saying a building with, you know, at least one dwelling unit in combination with permitted non-residential units. So that definition is still applicable. The purpose hasn't changed since we've, you know, we've drafted this. The district itself, the boundary, and, you know, where it applies hasn't changed. In terms of dimensional standards, you know, here we're starting to see some of the track changes. You know, again, we say that everything in this overlay supersedes those standards in Table 3. So, you know, if someone is proposing to put a mixed-use building here, they would use this overlay. We're saying there's no provision to waiver modify the dimensional standards, except that the permit granting authority shall determine the appropriate lot and building coverages when there are multiple buildings with different principal uses proposed on one lot. And so that allows someone to, you know, like I said, propose a mixed-use building and an office building, and you would be governed by the building coverage of 60% and lot coverage of 85%. The lot areas haven't changed. It's a small lot, so 12,000 square feet or 40 feet of frontage. The idea is to, you know, not make any lot non-conforming and have some flexibility in terms of new lots. We're saying this here, the maximum lot and building coverages shall be determined by the permitting authority. It's kind of repetitive. In no case shall the total site and building coverages exceed the amount listed above. So, you know, just kind of reinforcing that. There is some flexibility with limits. And there's no waivers for that. So if someone's proposing two buildings on the property, they can't exceed 60%. There's no way to say, can I get 70%? Could I get 95% lot coverage? You know, there may be some that have existing lot coverages, but you can't exceed what's, you know, what's existing or what's here.
Can you remind me why, how we came up with those two numbers? And, you know, as I look at them tonight, I'm thinking, why are they so low?
Well, it's interesting. When we proposed this, I think there was some discussion that the building coverage was pretty high. And so, you know, the BL has a really low building coverage, limited business zone, but a higher lot coverage. And so, you know, the 1685 is kind of a compromise between, say, like BG downtown and then other limited business or village center zoning. I mean, it could be a discussion point, like, you know, do we?
I mean, especially if we're not definitely calling for specific parking. You know, it just kind of feels like why would we put that kind of cap on it? I don't know. We can come back to that, but I, you know, somehow that's jumping out at me tonight.
Yep. Setbacks, there are some questions about, you know, how, you know, how thoughtful were the setbacks and, you know, are they random? And so, you know, we did, we're recommending changing Northampton Road from 25 to 20 feet, given where the right-of-way line is and where that falls on the properties, you know, on the sites. And I will say, the setbacks really respond to what's there. So at Amity Street, you know, I feel like, it's funny, everyone is always saying, well, we want to have bigger sidewalks in downtown. And here, we're actually having wider setbacks to allow buildings to be further from the street. And everyone's asking, well, could they, why do we have such large setbacks? It's like, well, if we're allowing six-story buildings, do we really want a 10-foot setback on Amity Street? And so 20 feet allows us to have a sidewalk and a tree belt. You know, 24 feet on University Drive allows the, you know, both the Swiftway to remain and then the access drive on the other side to be reused. And so, you know, if I were to say anything, I would say we could have, you know, larger setbacks. But I think these are reasonable, given the right-of-way lines and, you know, the properties and the layout. We are adding this provision here. A 30-foot buffer measured from the property line that has vegetated and has pervious surfaces and shall not be used for dumpsters, mechanical command driveways, delivery access activities. And this should have another qualifying statement. It's funny, I think I'm in a Mac right now. This buffer only applies to, measured from if the property is adjacent to a residential dwelling in a residential zone. So it doesn't apply to every property, only if there's a residential dwelling in a residential zone adjacent to the overlay. So, you know, that applies on Charles Lane and on the southwest, southeast corner near Northampton Road where the Cole Dickinson property is. So, you know, the idea here is with taller buildings to have a really, actually, we do this in other places in the bylaw to have a buffer that will be used for screening and green space and have some separation of uses. So, you know, for the PRP district, we do have a 50-foot setback, side setback. We have some other ones for educational uses near residential zones that is more than 30 feet, depending on what it is. But we think that having this additional buffer is important. So this is, you know, extending a setback and prescribing some screening there. Building height, 65 feet really isn't enough for six floors. We do have 70 feet. I'm told that a builder will try to do everything they can not to hit 70 feet because that becomes, you know, you have to follow high-rise construction standards, so they'll be at maybe 68 and a half or 69. So, you know, I think having 70 here is fine. 65 feet really wouldn't allow six floors. And so, you know, if we want to have six floors, I think we need to have that height. We are having this new provision here, so any mixed-use building with exterior wall within 150 feet of a residential dwelling on a lot in a residential district shall not exceed 37 feet or three floors. And so again, so if you're on Charles Lane and, you know, you measure from the back of the homes, you figure out 150 feet. So if any building is within 150 feet buffer of those homes, it's limited to three floors in height.
The entire building?
Yeah.
All right, I see two hands.
Yeah, I just, I was gonna go to, so what that means is, if I zoom in here. I guess that's as far, if that's visible.
Yeah.
If, so if you measured 150 feet, you know, from these homes, it is, it's somewhere about here. So, you know, the existing building is closer, but it's not a mixed-use building, and it's really only just a one-story building. So if you're, we're gonna put a new building here, it has to be 150 feet away, and it can only be three floors. But the goal of the overlay, really, and the other conditions, is to build out along the frontage of the properties here and here. And so we're having requirements that a majority of the frontage be built out and the building be along the front setback line. And so.
Well, I mean, that particular property, I know along University Drive, there's a sort of ratty, vegetated, I guess it's a wetland.
Right, this is, here's the boundary of the paving, and so you could get up to the boundary of the paving with a building, which is about the setback. And so, you know, for instance, someone could put a five-story mixed-use building here and then still put another building here. This one, the second one would just have to be three stories. And so this provision of 150 feet from a residential property only applies here. And it might apply, you know, 150 feet from here down in this corner. And so it really, it's really an effort to to have some some consideration for how you could, you know, have an additional, you know, protection for some of these single-family uses. And so, you know, if 150 feet is here, and it maybe stops here. And so then, right here, if a building's here, it has to be three stories. You know, if it's somewhere over here, this can be five stories.
Okay, so we got two hands here. Jesse?
Thanks. I had a question about the, I think it was the third bullet point in that section, which was the setback. Do, right now, there's no setback specified, so does that mean it could be six inches? And do we want to specify something if our intent is really for the sixth floor to be setback? I don't have a suggestion for what that should be, but you probably do.
Yeah, I was trying to go back there. So what we're saying is that this setback right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we never, we had talked about this, so the sixth floor, we didn't specify a stepped-back distance. I think it's really, you know, kind of at the discretion of the permitting, permit granting authority. And so that would happen during the permit review.
Meaning if a plan comes in and it's only a six-inch step back, someone's gonna say, oh, that's not enough, you need to make it 10 feet or whatever.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, I don't, you know, at one point, we had said, could it be, would it be at least 10 feet or eight feet or 12 feet? But I think it, you know, every site might have its own design, and so then really it's kind of responded to that.
I didn't remember that, but sure, thanks.
So Nate, are these projects gonna come in as site plan review?
They are, yeah.
So, you know, we've always had a hard time altering projects under that type of hearing. So we could say, no, we won't pass your site plan review until you push the building farther back on the sixth floor?
Yeah. It's pretty clear right here. I mean, so even now, I think the board, you know, without, you know, if there was another site plan review building happening in town, you know, I think the board can, you know, use what's in the bylaw, whether it's the dimensional standards or design guidelines to, you know, have an applicant make changes to their site plan.
Well, I think it would be helpful in this to say stepped back a distance acceptable to the permitting authority. Just make it clear that it's, that we have the option to accept or reject this particular dimension.
Yeah.
Or what about a recommended eight foot or whatever? This, I don't know. Because again, I think developers are gonna maximize everything they can, right?
Yeah, they always feel much more baked than I wish they were when they arrive for our review.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say, or have a minimum distance. I think, you know, it's something we staff could discuss.
Sure.
Okay. Bruce?
Yes, I can see what Jesse's just talking about and what Nate's saying and your concerns, Doug. I think something like this is probably okay, because if we start putting a distance in, as you said, it's probably gonna be different in different situations. And maybe staff will have some guidance for the folks, and we'll just have to make sure that that's the way it works. But my question was, I was thinking that on the matter of 100 and, of three, four buildings within 150 feet of the residential lot boundary. of, 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 three, four buildings within a hundred and fifty feet of the residential lot boundary, I was, yes, I think I'm comfortable with that now that after Nate described it. It's, it really has the effect of, of pushing the, the bulk of the building forward, which is essentially what we've been, uh, what we're, we're asking for in, 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 in design intent statements or design guideline statements further down. So I think, actually, thinking this through, uh, in real time now, I think, actually, I don't have a question. I think I'm, I can see how this is, uh, I, 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 I think this is gonna be fine. Okay? Thank you.
Okay.
All right, um, if we keep scrolling down, here's where we get to the permitting. So it's a site plan review. We define the mixed-use component differently in the overlay, so seventy-five percent of the street-facing facade to a depth of twenty-four feet. So, you know, currently in the bylaw, we define a mixed-use building as thirty percent of the ground or first floor. We have a different, uh, definition here. Uh, parking can be allowed in the area that's not, um, you know, we say other than parking here, but then parking can be allowed, you know, a, as well on the first floor. Um, and then here is where we get to the Big Y Plaza. In, in, in the area shown on the zoning map, that includes these parcels, map thirteen D, parcels two, three, five, fifty-nine to seventy. The ground floor shall be used exclusively, um, shall be occupied exclusively by any permitted non-residential use other than parking. However, up to fifteen percent of the ground floor may be used as incidental or common space to support the use on the upper floors. And so the idea here is really, um, it covers uh, this corner of the overlay up to this property boundary. So, um, those parcels are, you know, all of this here. If someone wants to use the overlay a hundred percent or, you know, as much of the ground floor, except for that incidental space, has to be a non-residential use. And, you know, the Big Y owners who own these two, the most of this, you know, half this area or a little more than half, uh, thinks that, you know, they're acceptable and they, you know, they think that's fine.
So, ju- so that fifteen percent would have to accommodate two exit stairs, an elevator, custodial trash collection.
Uh, Mail, you know, mail, full mailroom.
Yeah, and I, I guess I'm just wondering if you make assumptions for how big that is. And, um, cause that's, those are kind of fixed-size elements. Um, and that's gonna tell you the minimum footprint of your first floor. Have you done that math? And, and is the, uh, first, the minimum, that, that tells you the minimum size of the first floor, the footprint? Uh, is that a reasonably modest size, or is it gonna just force a really big building automatically?
When, uh, staff had looked at a few years ago, um, changing the BL zoning district with an overlay downtown and looking at the mixed-use building standards, we were told by an architect that fifteen percent is a, is a, you know, is a, a, a good number to use for this kind of thing, uh, you know, a good proportion. I mean, this could change. Um, we could have some other language there. Uh, and staff has, you know, talked about that, um. So, yeah, I mean, I, I, I know to your point of, does this, you know, inflate the size of a building so they can get the space they need to meet this?
Yeah, I guess I'm, you know, I mean, when you first just sort of summarized this, you said something, used the phrase sort of incidental.
Right.
So you support spaces for residential use upstairs or something?
Yeah, we say.
And, and I'm just wondering whether that kind of language might be sufficient without using a percentage at this point. But I, anyway, that's, that's a comment. Jesse?
Thanks, Doug. Um, comments have come up a few times, and we've never really continued the discussion, and I'm ignorant on what the possibilities are, but the idea of trying to incentivize uh, what the right word is, small business affordable commercial spaces somehow has just been raised by multiple people. And again, I don't know what the possibilities are. Um, but I, I, I don't wanna hold up this project for that reason, but I do think it's an opportunity to, to try and help the businesses who are there, stay there should projects come in, try and prevent situations like we've seen in town where things are vacant for years because the, I assume that managers are just not concerned. Um, someone, it's been raised a couple of times, while in exchange for the sixth floor option, maybe there's ways to incentivize. But again, I don't know what those incentives are. I don't know if others or staff have ideas about what that could be.
Yeah, this was discussed at this, yeah, the CRC meeting, sorry, the CRC meeting, um, this was discussed, and you know, my response was that it's really not a zoning issue. And so if, you know, if we wanted to have some kind of tax increment financing or something, that's really with the town manager or someone else, you know, maybe the assessor, but, you know, with zoning, it's really hard to have some requirement that the existing, um, you know, non-residential use be allowed to return to a new building or that you have, you know, a certain size storefront. You know, I think you could have, for instance, design standards that say you need, you know, doorways and things every so often, but that could still just be a big space inside with a lot of doorways.
Sure. And one, one thing I was trying to do a little hunting around, like, so the way we require, uh, uh, lower rent units, is it possible to do that for commercial space too? Like, does anywhere do that to try and encourage small businesses or whatever? I, I mean, again, I'm just ignorance. I don't know if that's possible.
Yeah, no, I think, like I said, that would be kind of a, a tax, um, program through the town manager, you know, and finance and assessment, not through zoning. And so, you know, affordable housing is allowed to do it. Um, you know, it's, it's in, um, you know, we have our, you know, we have our, um, we have a, a local, you know, kind of a petition to the state to allow local tax increment financing for affordable housing. And so, but that's been acknowledged because there's a benefit, public benefit there, um, as for affordable housing. I mean, I'm sure, I'm assuming we could do this for businesses. I mean, it's allowed, say, in, um, uh, urban renewal areas or for economic development incentive areas. Uh, but again, it's, it's not necessarily a zoning piece. I think that, you know, I would say that if we allow a sixth floor, there should be enough residential to support and offset and subsidize probably the commercial space or retail space on the first floor. It doesn't always happen that way. Um, so I, I understand the concern that if there's a new building, the existing businesses won't, you know, they either can't afford or won't be asked to go back in. Um, and I'll say, most of the businesses that are probably located on the, um, University Drive are probably in leases that have some term to them. And so if a developer came and just bought, you know, one property today and said, I'd like to do something different, they either have to, you know, pay out the businesses out of their lease or have some legal agreement or actually put them back in the new building. And so, sure, there are some safeguards there, but kind of, I understand what you're saying, Jesse. I just don't think it's a zoning.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is, assuming this gets approved, it could be another conversation with, I don't know, CRC or council about doing that.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Bruce?
Um, Doug, further to your question about whether this fifteen percent, uh, what kind of overall footprint, uh, would, uh, the, uh, the incidental spaces drive? And I, I did a quick calculation, well, and it seems that the, the footprint's gonna be, uh, the small, it's gonna drive at least a, a four and a half thousand square foot, footprint, maybe a little more, maybe a little less. But it's of that order, which is, um, um, clearly, uh, in, uh, a, a micro amount of space relative to the size of Big Y and buildings like that.
Okay.
But my sense is that, but some of the parcels, there are a couple of them quite small. So my guess is that, well, we could adjust it, but my guess is that we should imagine that this would drive some parcel consolidation at, uh, at the most.
Or it would be, you know, instead of having, say, a ground floor mailroom or something, they would have to put it on the second floor, right? So they would have to limit what they have as support or incidental space on the ground floor.
Yes, yes, I suppose so. But anyway, the things like, uh, the, the things that I was mostly looking upstairs and elevators and a couple of things that have to be down there, it's gonna drive a, a not terribly large footprint. And that's only gonna be, if it is a problem at all, which it may not be, it would only be a problem on some of the, because there's quite a scattering of parcel size on that lot. There's a one huge one, and there's a couple of middle-sized ones and a couple of small ones. So I don't think we could, uh, I don't think we should try and fix this to make it work for the small, uh, uh, a small-scale end of the parcel aggregation or the, 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 that, that, those seven parcels there, because some of them are quite small and some of them are quite huge. So just let's imagine that what we would be driving is, at worst, is a, is a, is an aggregation of the smaller parcels.
Okay. Well, a four and a half thousand square foot footprint for a building isn't, it's not huge, so I'm, I'm reassured to hear that.
Thanks, Bruce. Um, standards and conditions, we'd always said that one building would be permitted, um, more than one building on a lot, and we've added this provision. Um, additional mixed-use buildings on a single lot, whether or not they're adjacent to the street, shall provide the required percentage of non-residential use on the street-facing facade. So, you know, again, reinforcing the idea that if you have a mixed-use building behind the first building, they still have to provide, um, that proportion of mixed uses. And so, you know, if I annotate, you know, if this is a property, here's the street frontage and you have, you know, you have a mixed-use building here, and someone puts a mixed-use building back here, you know, this is the street-facing facade that they still now to, need to have seventy-five percent the mixed use, and so doesn't this here. And so I think, you know, I think the board understood that. It just wasn't clear, you know, probably in the way it had been written earlier. So, you know, that's the idea. Even if this building covered all of this, and this one is really behind it, there is still a street-facing facade, which is here, that has to meet the design standards for articulation and also this component of mixed use.
Uh, and Nate, since we have a, a few parcels that are on a corner and have two street-facing facades, I assume this works around the corner too.
Yeah, how do we word that? Oh, we say on the ground of University Drive, North Hampton Road. So, right, so in those instances, it would.
So not, not, uh, Amity Street.
Yeah. Uh, Karen, you have your hand raised?
Yep, Karen.
Yeah, I, I wondered, is it really necessary to have the buildings behind the street-facing ones be mixed use? Or is that someplace where we could be flexible and have uh, no, uh, commercial? Was, was the feeling that we had to have commercial even in the row behind?
Yeah, I, I thought so, because we had talked about allowing apartments additionally, and I thought the discussion was not to have those. And so, um, you know, right now, if we did that, it would change, you know, how we're permitting in the overlay. So really, the overlay is for mixed-use buildings. And so if someone wants to, um, put a mixed-use building, in my example, here, and, you know, there's enough lot size and they wanna put an apartment building here, and it's allowed in the BL, they can put a twenty-four-unit apartment building. But if they wanna put another mixed-use building, they have to follow the standards of the overlay and have the seventy-five percent to twenty-four feet be a mixed use.
Oh, I, I see. Okay, I get it. They, they can choose. Okay.
But there's the twenty-four unit maximum on apartment buildings under the existing zoning.
And the additional lot area per unit.
Right. Are you, is, does that work for you, Karen?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay. I mean, you know, we, we sort of evolved to focusing on mixed use for this overlay, and at one point, we did bring up whether we, we'd be okay with apartments behind, but that,
Right.
that would really change where we're, what we've got right now. Um,
Right.
Yes, and, and I do think that, given the properties and, um, wetlands and some other things, size of properties, I mean, there may only be a few properties that can support, you know, buildings behind a building. And so although we have flexible parking requirements, you know, I think most developers will have some parking because they want their development to be successful, whether it's parking for the non-residential piece or for the residential units. And so, you know, I, 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 you know, there's probably, you know, a few instances where you could support a building behind a building on the site. And more than likely, there will be, uh, you know, one building along the street and parking behind, uh, and maybe a building to the side, but, you know, I think in a rare instance, would there be a building behind, completely behind another building? Like the Big Y property, for instance, could support that. Um, I, you know, there's maybe one or two others, but. Hey, Jesse, you have a comment about that too, or a question?
I was just gonna add, from our last conversation about this, it also, the way it is now, avoids the creative developer making a tiny building in front somehow with commercial space and then a bigger building behind, which is all residential.
Right. Yeah, right, yeah. So I mean, right, if we, if we didn't specify and say, well, you could do apartments in the overlay and you're no cap on units, right, to Jesse's point, they might do a little mixed-use building here. And say, oh, I'm behind the mixed-use building, I'm gonna do a really big apartment building. Um, and it'd be really hard to try to capture that in zoning. Um, unless you started getting some, like, you know, requirements for proportionality of floor area or something, and it gets really tricky. Uh, so, yeah, I, I mean, I'm okay with this, you know, and so, um, you know, the idea is that this overlay provides an opportunity for development. There's currently the R and D overlay on University Drive, and it's never been used, right? It was, uh, voted in at fall of two thousand and seven town meeting to try to accommodate, I think, a UMass professor who thought they were gonna come off campus and have some, uh, facility. And then it never materialized, but I think, you know, a lot of people thought it was a good idea for this area of town, given what, you know, its proximity to UMass and, you know, what was there and how it could be redeveloped, given it was already Office Park in some areas, to have some, um, an overlay for, it's just two uses in the use chart. And so, you know, if, for instance, we, you know, this overlay is in place, and it doesn't seem like it's um, being utilized, you know, we could ask, you know, developers and property owners, what, you know, what do they see as a barrier here? Is it this requirement we have here and do we change it? And so I'm, you know, we really stress the idea of having a mixed-use component here. And so I think it's okay having it for now, and if we need to change it in the future, you know, we can always revisit, um, you know, any part of this. Product open space? Uh, we say every product shall have some usable open space. We deleted this statement that it could be provided onsite or the exterior on the interior. Um, you know, we say the, this, this additional statement, uh, was previously down here, we just moved it up. So product open space on the site shall be provided in areas that are not required parking, driveways, the multi-use path, service areas or areas with a slope greater than ten percent. So, you know, the idea is that there's some, some, it can be a small little, small little sitting areas along the path or in front of a building or a small little corner plaza. We don't prescribe how big it is. Again, that's something that would happen during permitting, but during the discussion of this overlay, we said, it wouldn't be great if there was a multi-use path and then some other, uh, amenities for pedestrians, you know, the public and residents. We are saying that there'll be, shall be a minimum ten-foot-wide multi-use path for public access, uh, end use between the front of any building and the property line. And so this is a requirement, even if it's on private property. We think that can be managed with easements, and as this overlay, if it were developed, the sidewalk along the street on the west side would be, um, you know, removed in phases as this multi-use path was developed. And so,
So,
you know, we think.
So this reads like it could be on both east and west sides.
Right. I think, I don't know.
You struck the part about the west side.
Yeah, let me put it back.
All right.
Um, this hasn't changed, so we talked about what outdoor amenities would need to be there. Uh, we are saying now that planting the street trees shall be required. And so, you know, this was discussed at the CRC, and we had had it would be encouraged and really, it is, um, you know, we ask for a landscape plan, and so if there is no existing trees, uh, then, you know, we can have it through the permitting that there, these street trees planted. And so, you know, right now, if we remove the sidewalk on the west side of University Drive, and then we have this, the twenty-four-foot setback, what that really allows is a nice generous tree belt of fifteen to eighteen feet, possibly wider for really healthy street trees, which are there, the planting of new trees, and then a nice separation between the road and then pedestrians. And then a nice separation between the road and then pedestrians and then the building and so. You know, we think that's really important to the vibrancy of the street staff and I think the planning board has talked about that. And so anyways, we're requiring street trees to be planted. For parking, we. The general requirements in seven point zero, the bylaw don't apply and then seven point two shared at least parking don't apply. The seven point zero is the parking. Formulas for different uses, so you know, if you have, you know, so many square feet of retail, you need, you know, so many parking spaces. But we are requiring an applicant to submit a parking utilization study and a parking management plan. In order for the permit granting authority to determine the. The adequate number of off street parking is provided. In any, you know, any, any, I was trying to make some changes while I'm talking, in any. Lease agreements or, you know, shared or leased parking agreements and so, you know, the CRC asks, well, what if? You know, residents decide to park somewhere else, like in another parking lot on the street or in a neighborhood further away. And, you know, really what, what this is doing is it's not saying. You know, like in the municipal parking district, an applicant can just come to the planning board and say. I don't need to provide parking, I'm in the municipal parking district. And what we're saying here is that you don't necessarily have to provide parking, but you have to prove to the board that you don't need it. And a parking utilization study isn't just a one page memo. It's, you know, using national standards in terms of what they think is needed for both the non residential and residential piece. And there's also the bylaw and other projects that the board can still use as reference and so. You know, if in our bylaw it says you need three point three parking spaces for a thousand square feet of retail space. And they're, you know, providing, you know, five thousand square feet and no parking, we could say, well, we don't think that's adequate for that given size of the non residential space. And so we still have reference points that the permit granting authority could use while, while going through permitting.
Karen.
Yeah, going back to the ten foot. Sort of the setback and the, and the larger alley that we want to have. Are we really leaving that up to the, is there some way that we can say, okay, this is going to be built? And you have to accommodate that for the developer so that we can guarantee that there will be a beautiful. You know. Pathway that runs the, the whole. Street university avenue on one thing, is there some way that we could put that in? Rather than just saying it needs to be at least ten feet and seeing what comes?
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, let me just write down. Yeah, the CRC mentioned this green belt, let me. So what we have, you know, our pieces, so we have. You know, the road right of way ends, we have a twenty four foot setback. And then we're saying within that, there has to be at least a ten foot wide path. And then a building which could be, you know, really close to the path. And so, you know, given the dimensions of the setback. The ten foot wide path, this, you know, this twenty four feet. Twenty four feet allows a bigger green belt which is existing. So we're not requiring that it be maintained or, or.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
But, but I, yeah, I mean, I think. Right, I, I mean, I, you know, I, my guess, my thought is that those, the, you know, if you take all these things and put them together. It does allow this tree belt to be there, given the setbacks and.
The tree belt and, and one beautiful sidewalk that runs through the whole university. Drive.
Well, I think that could certainly be. You know, that'll certainly be discussed during the site plan review for each project.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it is interesting, do we have some? Some language about the green tree belt, let me think about that.
Just, just to have some sort of. Conformity, conformity among the whole street. That would be the aim.
Right. So we touched on parking. Design guidelines, you know, there's a few changes here. We're saying the designer review principles shall be, shall apply, that's always been in there. This is a change, we say to the extent feasible, a majority of the street facing facade. Shall be built along the frontage and be generally located along the minimum front setback line to reinforce the sidewalk edge. So again, if you have a property.
The, the word frontage, I would expect you to have frontage line or the. It is, frontage is kind of a. It's, it's, it's an adjective, it's not a noun, right?
Well, in zoning, this is a property. And this is the street, the front, this is the frontage from here. To here and so we're saying now, a majority of the street facing facade should be built along the frontage, so you know.
Okay.
Somewhere along here, generally along the front setback line. And so, you know, the idea would be right, that a building can have some step backs. At the corner or something, but really it's kind of close to the setback line and covers most, a majority of the frontage.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I mean, this can be clarified, but that's, that's the, what this is trying to say, you know, otherwise. What we're talking about at CRC, if this language on the frontage wasn't there. And you have a property like this, someone could put like the gable end of buildings here. And then we'd say, okay, well, I only need this little small mixed use piece here and here. And then, you know, maybe that would be okay, maybe this becomes all pedestrian area, but more than likely this just becomes, you know, a driveway access. And parking and so, you know, the, with this. Standard, the building has to be more like this. You know, at least for a majority of that frontage.
Okay, Fred.
Yeah, that's one way to do it, I was also thinking maybe just say, use the phrasing frontage line. And I thought that would be clearer.
Okay.
For frontage width, I mean, I don't know.
Is the frontage line the same as the property line?
Well, we're, but we've set, setback from the property line.
Yeah, so no, it's me, the frontage, it's the frontage width, I guess, it's the, you know, the frontage. Width of a property, so. Right. And this.
Well, you can consult your zoning dictionary for that one and. Figure out what to do.
You know, because otherwise what we had originally was just saying that a majority of the street facing facade. Shall be generally located along the minimum front setback line, but like what I was saying is if this is the, the setback line. They could just do, you know, a building that's really perpendicular to the street. And we really get, you know, we don't get what we want is building along the, you know, along the street and so. I think we need to have some kind of qualifying language to, to, you know, to have this.
What's, what's the word generally doing for you here?
Because we do say that shall have variations in the architectural detail, change in plane and other treatment and so. You know, it's one of those things where.
Okay.
We could say that in the BL overlay when we were proposing it, like every so many feet, it needs to be stepped back two feet or. And so it's just generally, right, so again, if this were the.
Okay.
The line, it's like maybe the building, you know, is here and then it does something like this every so often or. Maybe if, on the other side, maybe it's like this, but then it steps back ten feet and then it does something like this and is that generally? Along the setback line, I think, again, that's gonna be determined through permitting. You know, at some point, if it goes back really far, that's not along. That frontage line, I, I don't know what this exact distance is, I think it really is relative to the site design in the building, but. We're hoping that this, the street facing facade should have variations. And then, in concert with this one, generally along the minimum front setback line, we're gonna have. You know, a street edge.
Okay.
You know, anything that's in, you know, without track changes hasn't changed since the previous version, so we want. Onings and canopies between the first and second floors. We're saying, you know, the street facing facade shall have variations in architectural detail. Surface parking needs to be, you know, setback behind buildings or located at least thirty feet from public ways and screened from adjacent properties. None of this has changed, we did. Changed this last one about, you know, loading docks, dumpsters and mechanical equipment, except as required by public utilities, shall be located in low visibility areas and screened from view. And so, you know, it's just kind of rewording that, but still saying that it needs to be screened. What we removed is movers and other mechanical equipment shall be on the rear facades, facade's not visible from the public way or roof and. I think to say that it can't be visible at all is really almost impossible and so, you know, I think. This condition is still, you know, saying low visibility areas without having to specify the rear or roof and so again, that's something that. You know, the permitting board could look at and so, you know, if there's an eighty unit building and they want to have eighty compressors and. You know, you know, eighty electrical panels. You know, I think the, the board with some of these conditions, these standards and conditions can say, you know, we don't want the panels on the front of the building. I mean, the meters, we want them interior. Or around the side and if the compressors are gonna be on the ground, they have to be behind the building, if they're on the roof, they need to be screened either with a parapet or some other screening. And so I think that there's enough here to have the board, you know, say that. And that, that's, 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 that's actually it.
Okay. Alright, so. I guess I'll ask for a public comment at this point. We've had a lot of board discussion, members of the public, do any, does anyone like to make a comment on this? This draft? Or a question? Alright, so we have a, oh, there's someone, Elizabeth Vierling, let's bring her over.
Hi, Elizabeth.
Hi, Elizabeth Vierling, Thirty Sixth Cottage Street, I just had one simple question which was concerning parking. And whether or not there's anything to be said about requiring. Electric vehicle chargers, especially with regard to residents when you have apartment buildings. That's it, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Nate, had you thought about that at all? I don't, I don't remember that coming up.
The code's gonna require it, so.
The building code?
We don't, we, we could have our own kind of ratio or formula, but it will be required by code to, to do that, so I don't, I don't, usually we don't. We try not to be too redundant, but.
Okay, and I assume increasingly landlords will. Think that that's an amenity that they. That their tenants would appreciate and make them more attractive.
Right, yeah, so it'll have to, sure, yeah, they'll have, they'll have to provide that.
Okay.
So I mean, I haven't, I could ask for the ratios. What that is, but it will be required.
Okay. Are there any other, any other public comments? Alright. Nate, do you see any reason, I mean. It seems like most of the board is reasonably satisfied with the draft you've got tonight. Would it be appropriate for us to vote to recommend or should we continue?
Yeah, I think the CRC's continued it till January, I, I would say that the planning board. Could continue it, just to see if there's any other discussion at the CRC that might result in changes. You know, I think we could, if we wanted to have like a straw poll or something, say that the planning board is comfortable with this. You know, I was gonna go through the comments from the CRC members, I, I will say at the CRC meeting. You know, one member was absent, one wasn't feeling good and left early and so although there was a meeting or a hearing on this. There may be more discussion at their next hearing, just given that there, you know, there'll probably be more attendance. You know, at the, I was just gonna go through the, you know, I could share the screen with the comments that they provided and questions. I think the changes addressed most of them. You know, there was some questions about. With the six story, would we change our inclusionary zoning formula? And, you know, I think the board had discussed this and, you know, I, I would, I think that, you know. Percentage is a proportion, so if you get more units, you get more units, both affordable and market rate, I don't know if we want to. Tweak the percentage. You know, I think the goal of the overlay is both units and mixed use, you know, mixed use, so units and non residential space. So I mean, that's something that, you know, I, I feel comfortable where we are leaving our inclusionary zoning and not adding an extra requirement. You know, was discussed, someone had suggested, could we have twenty percent of the units? And to me, actually, if we said twenty percent of the units, I actually think that would just deter people from looking into this, just because that is a large percentage. But. You know, my thought at one point was if we were doing this, could we increase the percentage of affordable units and inclusionary zoning? And then have an AMI that's greater than eighty percent, like a hundred and fifty percent AMI for the units above twelve percent. It becomes a, a local restriction, has nothing to do necessarily with the state and it becomes a little more complicated. But, you know, maybe not for this overlay, but for the future, there are some ways to have. You know, different affordability levels, you know, once we get above eighty percent, it's no longer capital A affordable and so. Would you be trying to address, you know, obtainable housing for households that, you know, don't qualify for affordable but still can't pay for market? I just, it's, I think it's a little more complicated than just saying, let's increase percentages and put a different AMI in there.
Okay, Bruce.
Nate, I rather like that idea, but in other words, I, I mean, I think last time I advocated that we consider lifting that percentage. Given the, the, the granting or whatever. Verb you want to use that meant that we can go or that applicants can go up to six stories. There was a fairly robust conversation around that, you were eloquent and, and I. I was more or less assuaged, but I was, I, I would be certainly supportive if there was a. A groundswell towards fifteen, but then two things have happened, one, we're now. Meeting on. Tuesday with the Housing Subcommittee, Jesse, you mentioned your colleague. Or at least someone, somebody that Jesse was interviewing for a staff position. Faculty position, I guess I should say, who determined that they couldn't afford to live. So it seems to me that it would be quite. Useful to have the, lift that figure from twelve to fifteen percent and, and then put the, the, the additional three percent in, in the hundred and fifty. AMI because that would probably capture that. That, that, that slice of the market that Jesse just observed yesterday or the day before yesterday was, 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 was not being well served. And this location would be seemingly quite good for that kind of a. Potential clientele, so it seems that it might be. Might be, might be productive, might be a good idea to do what you just suggested, so I think. I would support that, or at least I would commend that to our collective consideration.
Alright, Bruce. Anybody else wanna comment on that topic? Alright. So we have one advocate and I don't hear anybody else. Raising their hand to support or deny that. I guess I, I've always just felt like we needed to have as low a barrier to maximizing the units in this area. And the more things we make complicated. The less likely it's gonna get built out, so. I'm. I probably would not support that, Bruce. Jesse.
Yeah, I guess my comment, I, I agree with you, Bruce. But I, I think I'm leaning with Doug here where I'm hoping the number of increased units here will allow that housing to happen elsewhere. Like that, that's how I see the real, as you all know, that's my driving goal in a lot of what I'm doing here, but yeah.
I'm back to where I was two weeks ago, thank you.
Well, we have, we've, we've talked about it, so we'll, we can keep talking about it, Fred.
I was just gonna say that I agree with Bruce, so. I was, I was gonna support that.
That, that's the Bruce of three and a half minutes ago, Fred.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I, yeah, I think that we're, you know, probably later tonight, we're gonna talk about the housing needs assessment, and then we're under, you know, having a housing production plan developed. And I think, I hope that there'll, you know, be some strategies there that, you know, are creative in terms of how to, you know, generate housing for different income levels, whether or not it's capital A affordable, or, you know, we call it now, I guess, obtainable housing, but having some ideas for, for that.
Well, we're, we're gonna have all these ADUs too, all these 900 square foot ADUs that are, you know, only, only one of the print lot, only, only one of the structures on the lot can be students. So, you know, landlords are gonna be looking for grad students and young faculty to fill the other structure on the lot. Bruce?
Actually, I was gonna move for a continuation. I think Nate, the, I at least have read through the comments of Pam and Mandy Jo. And it seems that, as you said, they have been essentially covered, they are from the CRC. I think it does make sense to continue the meeting and to, so that if there's any other conversations at the CRC that might lead to changes, which we could reasonably assume would happen, that we would be in a position to deliberate on those briefly, at least before finally coming to a recommendation decision. So I would suggest, rather than spend the time now going through that, that we would do it once the, the CRC has done its second deliberation and capture the whole thing together. Because largely, I think you've already done, so I don't think it would be time that well-spent to review the, the, the documents that we've, that you've attached in the packet.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So I assume, go ahead, Nate.
Yeah, I think we've addressed a lot of the questions and comments from the CRC members. Uh, some of it would be just confirming that, you know, we, we have. And I think it's clear that, you know, multiple buildings can be allowed. You know, if it's not a mixed-use building, it has to follow the underlying zoning. And so, you know, if someone wants to do an apartment building or an office building, in a mixed-use building, they can. And then, you know, the only thing that the kind of overlay applies to both buildings is the law and building coverage. And so we've written kind of that in that, you know, you'd have to, the Permeating Authority would determine what is the appropriate, but not to exceed what is the law and building coverage of the overlay. And so I think we've covered it, I mean.
Yes, I, I read it pretty closely thoroughly two times, actually, because it was fairly technical. And, and, and I had a bunch of questions, but all of them were dealt with, so I, I don't have reason to review it.
Okay, I see Chris Brestrop's hand. Pam, if you could bring her over?
So Doug, you've got a motion on the floor.
Okay, well, we need to settle the date and the time. Chris?
Am I here? I'm here.
Yes, you are, let's have your name and your address, you have three minutes.
Christine Brestrop and I live at 128 Heatherstone Road. And I just wanted to mention that we've recently discovered that we should have included Article 2 in our legal ad for this particular issue, because Article 2 covers different kinds of zoning districts, and it would cover a new overlay district. So by continuing this public hearing, it gives us the opportunity to advertise for the change in Article 2 to add the University Drive overlay district. And I don't know if Nate Malloy wants to say anything about that, but I just thought that would add to the reasons for continuing, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, I, I forgot about that, I mentioned it last night. Article 2 has the description of districts, and so we would include this as a special district. And then we, you know, name it and then have a statement describing it. And so really then there's three changes to the zoning bylaw. One is in Article 2, to, you know, identify the district, to change the zoning map, and then to add Article 17. And so we, in our, in our memo and on our zoning amendment, we had, we hadn't referenced that Article 2 change. It's an, it's not, it's a, it's an addition to Article 2, it's not, you know, necessarily changing anything, but.
Okay, so we have a, a, most of a motion on the floor. And I assume that we would continue to January 8th?
I would recommend the 22nd.
Oh, the 22nd, okay. So 6:35 again?
Well, it, it depends, we're gonna continue the site plan review, Nate, for 422 Amity Street?
Right.
So you, so either before or after that?
Well, I mean, unless there's a lot of changes, it seems like the board is pretty comfortable with the overlay. And so what the, you know, the, the vote would be to recommend this, you know, if, if we like the changes to council, and then it, you know, becomes a discussion at the council, so it might not be a long discussion.
Okay, so, so 6:35, we'll do it first?
Well, we could also go ahead with 6:35 now and then continue the other one to 6:34.
We could, we could.
Okay, so, so moved continuation to the date, January?
22nd, I think.
At 6:35. Thank you.
All right, Jesse?
The second that.
Great, thank you. Okay, if no more discussion, we'll go ahead and vote on that. Bruce, we'll start with you again.
I'm an I.
All right, thank you, Fred?
There we go, now you can hear me, I.
Thank you. Jesse?
Hi.
Johanna?
Hi.
Karen?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well, six in favor, one absence, no abstentions. So we are continued to, to January 22nd at 6:35. The time now is 7:49. And I know we have the folks for the next hearing sitting in the audience. But I think what we should do is take our five-minute break and start off with their, with their hearing afterwards. So time is six, or I now have 7:50, let's come back at 7:55 if you can, thank you. All right, I have 7:55 on my clock, if you are hiding behind your, your dark gray rectangle, you can turn your camera on and let us know you're back. And Pam, I think you could start bringing over.
Okay.
You know, at least Tom and Barry, I guess. I don't know who else they want to be in the panelists. Good evening, Tom.
Evening Doug, how are you?
Okay. Hello Barry? So we need Johanna and Nate.
Might Nate be on short-term family duty and?
Yeah, it's just hard to know whether he would want us to wait for him.
There he is.
He's back, so now we're down to Johanna.
You don't have to wait for me.
We were contemplating not.
All right, well, why don't I read the preamble? And hope that Johanna can get back before I'm done. Okay, time is 7:57. This is another public hearing, site plan review, SPR 2024-11, U Drive Amity LLC, Uni- University Drive, excuse me, at Amity Street, continued from August 7th, September 18th, and November 6th, all in 2024. Request site plan review approval under section 3.325 of the zoning bylaw to redevelop existing commercial space into 85 residential units and commercial space mixed-use development, including parking, landscape, lighting, and stormwater infrastructure. Parcel 13B, 18, 27, 28, and 54, all in the BL zoning district. I see that Johanna is in back-back, so we can continue to our board member disclosure. Is there any disclosure from board members about this project? Okay, not seeing any hands, we'll continue. Uh, welcome Tom Reedy and Barry Roberts, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for the record, Tom Reedy, an attorney with Bacon Wilson here in Amherst, on behalf of U Drive Amity. Uh, and, and so what we're doing this evening, we're gonna ask for a continuation to January 22nd. But I'd like to give maybe a little bit more context or, or color to where we are in the progress of the project. And so last we were here, and we gave a presentation, there was some feedback. And then really, as far as the planning board was concerned, we, we put a pause on the project so we could go to the Conservation Commission to have a discussion, because the, the idea was, well, if, if CONCOM is gonna require significant changes to the project, let's not get too far down the road. We had two hearings with the Conservation Commission, the, they closed last hearing. I'll hop over to their hearing right after this. They were going to issue an order of conditions, however, I've, I've talked to the conservation agent, because, and what I'm gonna do is share my screen and, and say to you, Barry, as you'll recall, there was a, this was a two-building project, and I'll show it in a moment. Barry got some of the figures from steel, frankly, for the building, and they came back so high that it makes the project as previously designed financially infeasible. And so we have pivoted, and I'm gonna show you what we're considering, uh, instead of the, the two-building approach. And so as you'll recall, and if you look at the diagonally hatched areas, we had proposed two buildings at five stories, we were talking about six stories, with this portion of this building and the bottom portion of this building here, you know, you can see they're both outlined in red, uh, as a podium build, which would have steel, and there would be parking underneath and parking underneath. But because in his diligence for the project, the numbers came back that, that, like I said, made the project financially infeasible. What we are now exploring is to eliminate this southerly building. And so I'll back up and say, the previous proposal had 85 units and 259 beds, with I think 186 parking spaces, 11,000 square feet of commercial space. That's what was proposed. The plan that we are currently working on, that we've got a floor plan from Kuhn Riddle, that's been sent over to Phil Henry, the engineer, who's looking to create the site plan, has what you see colorized underneath here, and I'm gonna show you an overlay in a, in a moment, but essentially takes the northerly building and then extends it a, a bit further here. What that means is the access road, which was proposed for right here, if, if you recall, we had an access road proposed for here, and then a single drive-through proposed over here, that also provided site circulation for the fire department. That has been eliminated, and what I'm gonna do is I'll stop sharing this, and I'll start sharing this preview. And so if you can now see what it would look like, instead of having the access in the middle, we'd slide that down here, and that southerly building would be replaced by parking. The parking under here would be eliminated and essentially become surface parking. And so the concept we're working with is, instead of eighty-five units, seventy-seven units, instead of two-hundred-and-fifty-nine beds, two-hundred-and-twenty-four beds, the commercial space actually increases. So we go from eleven thousand to, I think, twelve-thousand-two-hundred square feet of commercial space, all along that University Drive, still has that ten-foot-wide path here, still meets the setbacks of twenty-four feet, as you were just discussing in your new bylaw. And then I think we've got here like a hundred-and-sixty-six parking spaces. So the ratio of units and beds, the parking spaces stays about the same. I mean, well, where we were and where we are is about the same. It's just now it's all surface parking. It's still a five-story building. It's gonna be all wood construction. And so somewhat twofold, the purpose of this is to give you an update, to ask for the continuation, to make sure that a continuation is sufficient instead of a withdrawal and resubmission. Our sense is, given that we've only had that one hearing, there was a, we knew we were getting continued. We haven't had incredibly substantive discussions, conditions haven't been developed, et cetera. We think a continuation is acceptable, and then to get any initial feedback that the board has on this redesign. I mean, frankly, I think we like it better, and I'll ask Barry if he has anything to say in a minute, but I think we, from a constructability standpoint, and still fitting in with the aesthetics, you know, you still have those bump outs that we had before, and a lot of the aesthetic designs from previous, plus you increase the commercial space. So I'll leave that there, and we're happy to answer any questions, but this is where we are right now.
All right, thank you, Tom. Johanna, you have a question or a comment?
Thank you. Thanks for sharing this. It's helpful to kind of know where the project is at in its process. I think there are, so I mean, I'm sorry to hear that you've had to adapt the project because of, you know, price of steel. I do think that the like the longer continuous building on University Drive has some real benefits. And one question that I have is whether you have considered actually extending the building even further along University Drive, potentially eliminating those, you know, ten to twelve parking spaces that are kind of currently on University Drive and only having the access on Amity Street, so that it really kind of creates more of that, you know, I don't know, boulevard feel.
Yeah, that's a, it's a great question. We haven't explicitly considered it. I think probably implicitly in the design iterations we have. I think we, a couple of things, you know, we had this conversation before Johanna, just about parking, right? You had asked initially, like, do you need all that parking? And parking has driven this project just because of the cost of the project, plus the commercial space. So if this was just a residential project, we'd probably be okay extending it as far as you're saying. I'd worry that with the commercial use and whereas, you know, residences, you can probably get away with one vehicle per, but with the commercial space, it's gonna be tough to find tenants who say, well, where's our parking? Because we've got folks coming in and out. So that's one of the considerations. Site circulation for a fire department is another consideration, you know, then being able to come in and go through the entire site. This all said, I'll talk to Barry, I mean, he's here listening. We'll talk about it to see if extending that little bit more makes sense, and if he's willing and comfortable to take the risk of having reduced parking for the trade-off of getting additional square footage of commercial and residential space. And I think it's just, you know, what is his risk tolerance? Plus, will the fire department allow it? But I mean, I think it's a good comment, and we'll look at it.
All right, thanks, Johanna. Jesse?
Thanks, and thanks, Tom, for the new ideas. I was gonna say, I had two comments. One was basically what Johanna said, also, I won't go there again. I was wondering if there was still a sixth-floor, sixth-floor plan in case the overlay does go through? Or does the new construction prohibit that?
And so Barry, I'll ask you to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the most we can go up with this wood frame fire retardant construction is five stories. So I think if we were to go up to that additional six-story, and what I'll tell you, Jesse, is that we looked at, we priced it out at six stories with the steel, and that's in five stories, obviously, but even at six stories, it didn't work. Part of the other, you know, to get into the weeds a little bit. This was probably going to be somewhat of a phased construction, or at least where you know you're buying steel at some point, and then you're buying steel potentially later. And some of the discussions about tariff was also concerning, not knowing what's actually going to happen. With tariff, and then third, on top of it all, we have to build this to passive house standards. And there's a lot that goes into that, a lot of expense. I mean, you have to, we've been doing design build for the mechanicals, and we're not gonna be able to do that. And then, you know, windows have to meet a certain threshold, et cetera, et cetera. So it's like one thing on top of another that just kind of piled up.
Great, thanks. Still very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to ask, Tom, what's driving the passive house? Is that Barry, or is it something external?
External. So the town of Amherst adopted, opted in to the code, which requires passive, us to meet the passive house standards.
Okay. Thank you. Bruce?
Supportive of Johanna's comment, understood the constraints and the thought would need to go into it. Question, Tom, is on, you said it's all wood construction. So typically, we've seen these buildings as podium construction, I guess is the term that's been used, where the first floor with a concrete separation between the commercial and the residential, and that the lower floor is steel, and then the upper floors are wood. But it sounds like you were talking about all wood. I guess I was curious. Does that mean you're using some kind of mass timber in this? Or is it really all wood, and you can do that to five stories? I guess I didn't know you could do that.
Yeah, and so I'll speak, Barry, I just want you to pay close attention to see where I misspeak. It's not mass timber, it is wood. I think the, for the five-story building, it's about fire separation. And so I think it's meeting certain requirements with fire separation between the floors and even maybe on the exterior of the building. And Barry, I don't know if you wanna add a little bit to that, because I know I'm falling a little bit short.
Let me interject, just say that this probably is a better thing to be dwelt on when you come back seriously with the revision. So let's hold that question until then. Mostly, I was interested in whether that meant mass timber, and you've answered that part of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Fred?
Yeah, I'm curious, the prior iteration of this, by being able to build one building and then the other building, it solved the problem of the the insurance office and so forth, being able to, in an orderly way, move without really having to shut down their business. And I'm wondering if this is gonna be able to be phased in such a way as to allow that with this construction?
Great question. It's something that Barry and I have been talking about, and I know he's been thinking about for the past several weeks. If you ask him, he thinks he can phase it in a way where he can build this portion and this portion of the building, and then stop about right here, and I can go back to the overlay, but I won't take your time to do so, because twenty-five thirty-five could continue to exist as that building is built here. And so he would just need to have essentially a fake facade on the side, allow and charter if, if they decide to move in. And I know we're having conversations, you know, as recently as this week, about them relocating. Allow them to relocate, and then to take this building down, to finish this building, and then to do the parking over here. So the idea is to try to accomplish that. I think, given the timing of it and the other tenants in the building, you've got Zomek Law, who I don't know that they're gonna renew the lease, Barry's office is there, and then I think Cheryl Nina has already gone somewhere else. So it's really in charter that we're trying to see if they want to come in here. And if frankly, they don't come in here, they're probably going somewhere else anyway. So that phasing wouldn't be an issue. But Fred, to your point, Barry is thinking about phasing this in a way to accomplish keeping them on this site until their space is finished, and then to have them relocate to their new space, and then to take down twenty-five thirty-five.
Okay, Tom, I'll just ask, what do the colors mean on the plan?
That's a great question. I think what they mean, at least this darker green is commercial space. So the non-residential space, this blue teal, I think, is, we'll call it, non-residential amenity space. And then these are just two-bedroom units, four-bedroom units, because what Jonathan Salvon had done was sketch the floor plan to get a sense of what he could get for unit size.
Okay, so we now have residential units on the first floor along Amity Street.
Correct.
Instead of parking.
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, I'll be interested to see the elevation, particularly of University Drive. Actually, I mean, both, but you know, the longer the building gets, the more you start to think about how to break it up a little bit so that it's not too boringly consistent all along a really long length. I could probably be more articulate about that, but I think you know what I mean.
Yes.
So thanks for stopping in. You're looking for a motion to continue. Board members, first I want to ask, are you all comfortable with us continuing the existing hearing, considering this an evolution of the original application? So that we don't need to essentially close this hearing and have them apply for a new site plan review with a new number. I saw Jesse, I see Jesse's thumbs up, he nodded. Johanna had thumbs up, Bruce has thumbs up. Karen has thumbs up, Fred has thumbs up, so it looks like it's unanimous. For the record, we seem to be okay with that. So.
Let me ask one question, Mr. Chair, if I could, just because we, so you understand overall timeline here. Barry's looking to ultimately demolish the existing, I'll back up even further and say. So ConCom, as I mentioned, was gonna vote on the order of conditions tonight. We've asked them to reopen the hearing in February just to make sure that they're not issuing an order, only to reissue an order a month later. And so I think February twelfth is their date, and I've talked to the conservation agent with the hope that they can hear the update, because this is gonna be less impactful than what they were ready to approve. So I'm comfortable with that, and issue the order on the twelfth. And so we are planning on submitting something to the planning department, January thirteenth, January tenth, January thirteenth, for hopefully the January twenty-second meeting. We don't expect, we'll take it, but we don't expect closing and approval on the twenty-second, but we would hope that shortly thereafter, maybe in February, we could get such an approval so that Barry can take down the building in the spring. Site work begins in the summer. We've talked with Dave Zomek about the timing of this project as it relates to the roundabout project. So we're trying to sync those up, because Barry would like to have foundation in the ground in early fall to try to hit an August of twenty-six delivery. So this is just long-windedly to say, whatever comments the planning board may have as we're in, because now's a great time, because we're in this design. If there's any general comments, I've got yours about the facade, which we'll talk to Jonathan about. But if there's anything else that we should be thinking about, we'll take them, because it's gonna help us in the process.
But does that, well, thank you. Does that mean the continuation you want? Do you still want January twenty-second, or, because we had been holding off on closing until after ConCom, which would suggest to me, I mean, we're happy to see you on the twenty-second, but we may want to continue until the middle of February anyway.
And that's fine. And my prep is, if we can do the best plan we have before the twenty-second, you see us the twenty-second, you say, Tom Lau, how great is this? We're ready, let's just wait for ConCom. And then you continue it to your February meeting after ConCom. At least we're ready then, Nate's had the conditions drafted, and we're ready for you to vote and approve. So I think if we wait till February, we may end up in March before all of that happens. So we like the twenty-second. I'm just trying to say, whatever we can do ahead of time while the engineers in the design phase, it saves Barry some money, frankly, so he's not iterating off of that, because we're saying, here are the other changes that we need to be thinking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so anybody want to make a motion to continue? Actually, maybe before, I need to just check the box of asking for public comment. Does anybody in the public want to comment on what we've seen tonight? That appears to not be the case, so we have no public hands raised. I'll try to keep an eye out for any hands while we hear from Karen.
Yeah, in thinking about ideas, I mean, there's now gonna be a big front of commercial space, and it would be really interesting to examine how that could be done in a, you know, to be profitable, but also to add, really add to the vibrancy of the town. And there are so many ideas of, I don't know, getting a lot of little stores in kind of Thorne's Market or food galleries or some, I think that there's an opportunity to kind of see how have you make this, the residential is probably pretty clear, but how could you do something really kind of creative, and that would be a magnet for this commercial space? Because it is really central, it's walkable for a lot of people. So it's a really great opportunity and exciting.
All right, thanks. Thanks, Karen. Another hand from Bruce.
I was just gonna move to continue, but make sure that I'm not blocking anybody's interest. No one's hands is up, okay? So move to continue to the twenty-second. And do we want to make it at six forty or six thirty-four?
You guys, Tom and Barry, are you all right going after our conversation about the overlay? So you would go second.
Yeah, hopefully as long as it's not as long as it was this evening, but of course.
I can't make any promises.
I know, I mean, part of what I, what I'll say is, you know, this time it's only me. Next time we'll have engineer and architect, and they both cost money. And so, you know, the longer they're sitting around, you know, if they're sitting around for an hour, Barry's paying for that hour that they're sitting around, so.
Six thirty-four.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion to continue to the twenty-second at six thirty-four. Jesse?
A second, that.
Okay, I don't, still don't see any hands from the public, so we'll go ahead and vote on our continuation. Why don't we start with Karen this time?
I approve.
All right, and then Johanna?
I.
Jesse?
I.
Fred?
I.
And Bruce?
I, Bruce.
I also approve. So we are continued to the twenty-second at six thirty-four. You will be right after public comment.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays. See you next year.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good night. Okay, time is eight twenty-two. Okay, time is eight twenty two. And we'll move on to our. Fifth item on the agenda, accessible dwelling units or accessory dwelling units. Um review and possible vote on the amendments to the zoning bylaw. Necessary to address the new state legislation passed regarding accessory dwelling units. Nate, do you want to introduce it? Um I guess I'll just say that we did, we did receive a little. Slide, couple of slide packets from Bruce. Um that I think Pam distributed. I found those very informative and uh. I think I had at least one question on on one of those slides, so go ahead, go ahead Nate.
Yeah, the state also in the packet, you know, released draft regulations for accessory dwelling units and. They've had a webinar or two and a workshop and staff has attended them. And so I haven't updated the bylaw yet, just because it seems like some of the the rules and regulations are changing. In terms of how the legislation would be interpreted and applied and so. Um you know, at this point, I didn't, I didn't want to keep trying to create a bylaw that then just, you know, continues to change with. You know, newer versions of regulations and so. The housing subcommittee yesterday, we spoke about this a little bit. Um you know, I think there are some, uh you know, there's some questions, uh probably a lot of communities will have. The state is having. Um a comment period beginning December twentieth and running for a little bit. To see if there's any, you know, any, any changes uh or any ideas that would be submitted. Um and so, you know, I I there's a few that staff have. And so, yeah, I mean, I like, you know, I just, I just don't know if it's worth to try to, you know, get down into the details of a bylaw when. The regulations could change how how we interpret that. And so, for instance, you know, one is. Uh we have been thinking that an accessory dwelling unit would really be on a property with a single family dwelling, but. The way the regulations are written, it's that. In a zoning district that allows a single family residential unit, like a single family home. An accessory dwelling unit can be allowed on any property with at least one dwelling unit. And that dwelling unit could be in an apartment building, it could be in a mixed use building, it could be in whatever type of residential. Building or, you know, you know, residential type and so. Um you know, that's a di- that's different than what we had been interpreting and so I don't, I think there has to be some clarification before, you know, we would move forward. And um you know, the calculation of square feet, they talk about grow square feet. Including basement, sellers and other things, other areas of a of a. Building which is inconsistent with the building code definition of gross square feet or habitable uh square uh space and so. You know, all those things to me just need to be kind of clarified on at the regulation level. Uh by the state, not, you know, not the legislation, so. Uh we now know that the PVTA bus routes and bus stops are considered part of like the transit station. Um phrasing in the legislation, so. We cannot require parking within a half mile of any really kind of PVTA bus route or bus stop. And beyond that, we can't require more than one off-street parking space and so. Um staff thinks in our bylaw where we say we need to have adequate off-street parking or onsite parking. That that could be in um inconsistent with the state. Legislation and the rules that say you you can't require more than one um off-street parking space. Uh the rules and regs say you can't have design standards that would regulate. Uh the ADU any more than you would a single family home. And so really, we don't have any regular design standards for a single family home. And so, you know, there's questions about what kind of design standards then can you have for an ADU? And so they do say. You know, some standards related to dimensional uh regulations, whether that's, you know, they say um. Reasonable regulations to setbacks and bulk and massing, but then they also say you can't have setbacks that are any more stringent than what it is for a single family home, so. If you have a twenty foot setback for a single family home, you can't have a thirty foot setback for an ADU. Uh if you allow a three-story home, you have to allow a three-story ADU. Um you know, so which means it could be on like a, you know, you could build it above an existing garage or structure or something. Um so all those, uh you know, all those little pieces are important when we're trying to craft the bylaw, so I think, you know, if there was any questions that. You know, members have or um you know, any comments, uh we could go over the regulations. Uh like I said, I think it's, you know, I think it's, everyone's learning a little bit more as the state, you know, um. Uh produces information and as these webinars and workshops are being. Uh you know, put online, I think people will then have comments that are submitted at the end of this month that will inform a revised draft of regulations in January. So, you know, I think we have a bylaw in place, like I've said before, that can be used as long as it's not inconsistent. And so I think we might just have to, you know, be a little patient in terms of developing our bylaw until we have some more. Uh guidance and updated regulations from the state.
Well, um you know, the one that caught my eye was. The one about the the uh under definitions and what a zoning restriction was. And uh the one that talked about. Imposing conditions that limit future use or occupancy of a protected use ADU. Based on income or age or that imposes any similar. Use and occupancy uh restrictions as me, yada, yada, yada. Um it had to do with uh. Any particular age, you know, of of the occupants and uh that seemed awfully close to students to me. Um so, you know, if we have a a comment or a question period, I think it would be worth putting in a question. About what we were talking about, about whether we can, you know, limit. Limit the number of uh higher education occupants. Uh in one, either the primary or the ADU dwelling unit and not run afoul of the law. It'd be nice to know that since we have the comment period. Fred?
Yeah, that. That is exactly uh a a a significant issue and uh. I I think that uh we should uh make use of the comment period. I don't. Maybe at our, at our next meeting, we could uh. At least, that comment period is open how long? I I've forgotten. Um it starts on the twentieth of December.
Right.
And it goes up to January, I forget. If it's. Do you, do you know offhand, uh Nate, when it closes?
January ten, yeah.
And let's see, so we have a meeting on the eighth. Uh I'm wondering if uh, well, maybe the the housing subcommittee could come up with a uh. A public comment. Uh this is uh. This is really uh uh. Making it for for Amherst making any a a large problem, even a bigger problem, so. And uh maybe we can be heard.
Okay. Jesse?
Uh yeah, one comment on what you raised, Doug, and then a separate question. We did discuss that exact point also at our meeting the other day and. It's definitely worth seeking as much info as we can, the way we had interpreted, actually Fred pointed out that. Our language was saying either or, and so it wasn't limiting the ADU in any specific way.
Yeah, I I realize, you know, but I think we're we're close enough to the edge that it'd be worth.
Agree. Um but my my real question was more procedural. So the new law comes into effect February, right, if I'm not mistaken? And I I don't think there's gonna be two hundred applications of February second for ADUs, but. Let's say there are a few, do we, since there won't be anything in our bylaw. And there are potentially all these pending questions, does the town have a way to say? To sort of stall or delay to say we're working on what's, what the bylaw is? Or do those automatically move forward because of the state law? And sorry, and the reason is about, to think about what we might or may not want to do, because whatever we do would have to go to council and. It's a month, many months long process, I'm sure, right?
Yeah, no, we, you know, the, I think towns have been um advised to just, you know, issue the building permit and so. You know, we do have a a bylaw that has some general requirements for accessory dwelling units and so there are some that we could apply. To those permits, those applications come February, as long as it's not, you know, in conflict with the state legislation or rules and regulations. Um you know, then there's fire um uh code and building code requirements that they have to meet, so. You know, there's some, um the state fire marshal, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, but there was a workshop. Earlier la- or last this, you know, I guess earlier this year about, you know, what the fire requirements are. Um you know, if a if a ADU is setback far from, you know, um the property and it can't be accessed by. You know, if a, if a, you know, truck or a fire engine can't get close enough, then they have, they might have to have a sprinkle system in it and. Other things and so the the way the where doors and egresses are located impacts how the fire code applies to it and so. You know, we we're not, we can't really deny it, but you know, all that review was, will, you know, still happen and so. You know, I I there probably will be some applications in February. Um we have some requirements about placing, you know, stairs. To the side or rear if possible. Um we do have something about the scale being um. Um somehow uh responsive to the primary dwelling and so I think some of those things. Might still be, you know, could be used, but you know, essentially, to me, it's like what the state regulations are saying is. You know, communities don't regulate single family homes, so they don't really want much regulation on an accessory dwelling unit, so they don't want people to say. You know, you know, they said, for instance, in the in the slideshow, like. Having a design standard saying consistent with neighborhood character is is unreasonable or prohibited, right? So. I think what our standard says now is that the mass thing has to be. Um uh I I could find the exact language, you know, somehow in proportion to the single family home and so. You know, I think that maybe is a, could be, you know, could be reasonable, some people might say it's unreasonable, but. You know, in terms of the standards and everything, they said it has to be really clear and objective and it has to both. To not be unreasonable or prohibited, it has to meet both, you know, the legislation, the rules, and then also the intent and. And and implementation of the zoning and local regulations, so. You can't have rules and regulations that really are like a backdoor way to say no to an ADU. You know, whether that's like a use restriction or an occupancy restriction or some design standards that really make it impossible to have an ADU. The state would say that's unreasonable, so um you know, I don't think we have anything that's really prohibited in our. Except for the owner occupancy, you know, what we have now and what we proposed in our ADU, there could be things that might be unreasonable, but we, you know, we. We took the legislation in our draft file that the planning board has looked at and I feel like we're pretty close, it's just now with these rules and regs, there's just different things. Also to deal with like non-conforming structures, you know, multiple ADUs on a property. Um you know, there's a, I have, I have, yeah, there's, I have like a half dozen questions at least that need, I feel like we need to have the answer before we could. Figure out the new bylaw.
Nate, I also remember Pam Rooney saying we may have a bylaw somewhere that says only three people can live in an ADU. Is that true? And if so, would that be? I mean, that's not really zoning, so maybe it's not our issue, but does that go out the window too?
Possibly.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there will, you know, um there are communities in Massachusetts that passed bylaws at town meetings, one of them said. You know, um I think it was like two uh occupants in an ADU, one of them had um. Uh a height, uh one and a half floor uh restriction. Uh some of them said it it can be, they, you know, you can regulate a short-term rental, but they're saying you can't regulate, you know, kind of a use or occupancy, so. You know, some communities were saying it has to be at least a twelve-month lease or longer and so. You know, communities have passed some of these things at fall town meeting and. I don't think the state has yet to review those, but I I feel like some of those things would be considered unreasonable. And so, you know, parts of those bylaws might not be um consistent with the rules and regs.
Okay, uh so I see two hands from the board and then I see Pam Rooney's hand from the public, so. We'll, we'll start with the board, Bruce?
Uh I've got a couple of questions and comments, but I'll start with the protected use question. Um uh Nate, I I think uh I noticed or heard during the uh. The PVP C presentation that with the promulgation of the regulations. That this ADU was declared a protected uh use. Uh is that, so that's, that's a relatively recent designation, is that correct?
Yeah, I think the legislation had always been a forty A section three. Um so, you know, if the state finds that, you know, something needs to be protected from local, you know, overly. Restrictive local regulations, they make it a protected use, so. You know, they put ADUs in that category, that's why in the regulations, they're defining it as a protected use ADU. The regulations are making it a protected use, it's the legislation that calls for it to be.
Okay, but that's, uh I didn't think I understood that until I was uh listening to the PVC. PVPC uh presentation uh from the woman who at the uh. Uh Office of Housing in Livable Communities, who's, you know, who's, who's the hard jumper all of this. Was basically gave those uh presentations that I sent around, so that seemed to uh. Uh basically armor plate this thing in a way that we perhaps weren't uh quite so fully aware of before. Uh some, uh moving to my comment. Um at the pub, at the PVP C, uh uh after the presentation, they invited the commissioners to comment and I. Um I was recognized and I basically made the case that Amherst was a unique uh community. Um because we had a very large tertiary institution in a very small town. And the Christine uh responded by basically generalizing what I said by saying, yes, we understand that there are. Towns with uh tertiary institutions and so forth and so, then I rebutted, saying, that's not what I meant. I said, I think I used the word unique and I asserted, and this is where I'm headed, that we're not one of ten, we're one of one. Um and that uh we are uh in the proportion, you know, to the the scale of the town versus the scale of the institution. Is uh unique in this, in the state. And I was wondering and thinking that we should perhaps at the public comment begin, or we should first of all, perhaps I should, since I'm making this. Bus here, um uh see if I can substantiate the case for uniqueness. And uh based on data. I'm not sure I know how to do that, but I might be able to find out or I might be able to begin to think of, start it. Uh and it seems to me that that at some point, we might be able to get. Uh some interpretation or 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 some adjustment. If we need it and we don't really know yet, of course, Fred is is concerned and we're all concerned. That this is a floodgate, but it may not be, but if it is. We may want to be prepared and it would seem that if this armor plated protective use is really as thoroughly uh. Gated as we imagine that it might be, that we might have to get. Uh some kind of action through our representatives to uh. Uh to 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 mitigate us as a special situation in this, if we can demonstrate, A, we are a special situation and B. There is a problem that uh our specialness is uh is creating for us and that would be a case to the legislature and. That's essentially what the woman said when I made my rebuttal. She said, well, that's what you have to do. So it may be that that's a, that's ultimately a course of action that we have to take and I. I think maybe we could lay the groundwork for that at this comment period.
Okay, Bruce, we'll go to Karen and then we'll go to Pam and then we'll do two more hands from the board.
Yeah, Bruce, that's exactly what I was gonna say, we have kind of a. Window now and it's starting, what, in two days and ending January tenth, it's the holiday season, so. I say we authorize you to uh do exactly what you said. Put data together and make the case that we are unique, especially in this time when they're. You know, they need to to realize that their laws with all the good intentions, there are things they haven't thought of and maybe we can. Be heard at this critical time, uh maybe you could formulate something and then uh just email it to us and. We can all sort of put our, approve it so that it has more sort of coming from the planning board of Amherst. Uh rather than coming just from you. And uh we're not gonna have a meeting probably before this is over, so we we should have a plan of action exactly as you said.
All right, Karen? Uh I will just say that any one of us can make a comment. During this comment period, so we don't need to wait for Bruce.
Yeah, but we should have also a concerted effort.
Right. Okay, Pam, could you bring over Pam Rooney? We'll hear from her. Then we'll go back to Fred and Johanna and then we'll go to Jennifer Taub. Pam Rooney, welcome.
Really appreciate being able to speak on this. And thanks for the suggestion that someone might craft. Some of the responses for in the name of Amherst or the Amherst Planning Board. I was going to ask that question. Who is going to craft this? And I would be happy to send any comments to that person. I think it does. Make it a little stronger to have it represent or be voted on by the board in general. A couple of thoughts go through my head. One is that. We're told again and again that, that age does not make a student, that we have students of all ages. And we have to acknowledge that students are not a protected class. Even if we have a protected use that's being proposed. So I think we do have some standing. On being able to. Emphasize the need to. Regulate in some way occupancy. The number of, I, I would strongly, again, strongly support the three person occupancy limit. And just, and make a case for that and why it's important again in Amherst. Thirdly, I would strongly support keeping our very benign guidance that we have in place already that in fact. A, a new building needs to look generally like the surrounding neighborhood. I do not think that's onerous. I don't think it is unreasonable regulation. And I think. Being able to, to fall back or point to our existing bylaw. Which I think is very reasoned and, and rational. As. As an acceptable. Format for regulation. Let's see if there was anything else. I think that's it, but, but I would be happy to send my comments to. To Bruce Callum if he's, if he's volunteering. Thank you.
I think we'll probably continue to want to have all comments to come through Nate and Pam. And they can route them to planning board members. Okay, now we'll go to Johanna.
Thanks. I feel like we keep, I'm, I'm grateful to hear that Nate is attending these briefings from the state. I feel like we're getting more and more clarity that. You know. What the state law is and what they. What kind of local laws would go against that and. I just totally disagree that the planning board as an entity. Should pursue the line of inquiry that Bruce and Karen are suggesting, like I. I don't think. We should like make the case. That we should somehow be exempt from the terms of the state law. I don't think we're that unique. And. Honestly, I think it's a bad look. Like we've added 3,000 housing units in this town in the past 40 years. There's a clear demand for more. Yeah, so I think if individual people want to engage in that. Process, great, but I don't think we as a board should do it.
Okay, thanks, Johanna. Jesse.
Thanks. I think you said you maybe go to Jennifer, but I'm happy to let go now.
No, I was gonna both, do both of you and then go to Jennifer.
Sorry, I was gonna bring this up later, but related to what Bruce brought up. And related to what Johanna is bringing up also, one of the things we had decided. Yesterday at the subcommittee meeting was to. Start putting together as much data as we could about. Not much of unique is the right word, but about the, the issues we're facing in Amherst, both for use. In our own decisions, but also to apply to this potential. Situation if we, if we want to try and get any kind of exception. So I've been assembling a list of types of things that might be fall in that bucket. Like just numbers of residents, ages, a lot of what's in the housing needs assessment, I think is relevant for the conversation. Things like. Water use data, other types of things that we can come up with to show that as a town, we do have. Pretty different issues that come up. So just put out there, that out there, if anyone has other ideas of how we can represent that. I'm happy to receive that information.
Okay. Now Pam, if you could bring over Jennifer Taub. And Pam Rooney can go back to attendees.
Hi Jennifer. Oh hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I'm Jennifer Taub. I live in District Four. On Lincoln Avenue and I'm, well, and I'm speaking as a resident, but. I do want to disagree with one of the statements from a planning board member. I think it's totally appropriate. For the Amherst Planning Board. To. Offer comment to help ensure that a state regulation that I think unintentionally, but it could have. Serious adverse impacts for the livability of the town of Amherst, especially for. Our long-term year round residents. And as part of planning, the plan, it is. Totally appropriate for the planning board to help mitigate. That what we are fairly certain will be adverse impacts. I don't think most people in town want to see ADUs. You know, up and down, you know, and I'm not saying they're going to be up and down each block, but. We can, there could potentially be many of them, and if we can't have any restriction on the number of residents. There will be four, because that's the limit that we allow. And with guests which we see. In houses, you know, especially that are rented to students. Even in terms of safety to have many people in a 900 foot ADU. And I think trying to seek design guidelines, because these are going to be. You know, as per the state legislation absentee own, where there's no incentive on the part of the property owner. To really ensure, you know. That. The structures that they build will be appropriate and somehow, you know, fit in and be compatible with the. Houses on the street around it. I might also add, as Bruce, you know. Works with the planning board and maybe others in the community. That our representative Mindy Dom, she came to the last District Four meeting and she talked about. How she advocated while this legislation was being crafted. For a university town like Amherst to be exempted for all the reasons. And the adverse impacts that we're concerned about. So I would also encourage reaching out to Representative Dom, because I think she would be very receptive. To doing what she could to work with you, Bruce, and to support. You know, and try and advocate to the legislature and communicate our concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Jesse.
Yeah, just to respond to that. When this first came out, yes, I actually had asked Mindy Dom to join us at the. Subcommittee, there, she was open to that, but then things got a little murky with what. Impact could actually be. But yeah, it's on our list to revisit that either for the full board, if the board is interested, or at the subcommittee meeting. So thanks.
Okay. I'll just say that although I don't think it's. Inappropriate for the planning board to. Put questions or comments. As a whole to the, to the state. I do actually agree with Johanna that it's not a good look. You know, the. The, since the point of the legislation was that more housing be built. For us to be sort of complaining that it's going to be a problem because we haven't built enough housing in the last 40 years. You know, I'm not sure we're going to get very much sympathy. And. You know, all of Alston is full of students and it's not really all that pretty. But, you know, they're all housed there and. So. I don't, I just don't think there's going to be a lot of sympathy. Karen.
I, I say that this is something that we should put together and then. The individual planning board, and then we vote as a planning board, because we obviously have different. Opinions on, on this and. You know, this, whether we get its sympathy or not, it's what we were trying to do is to get understanding for a predicament. Where a university has expanded the number of students. So much that a little tiny historic town next to it. Would, is threatened by being overwhelmed and having the, the permanent residents just really. That, that diversity disappearing and it's worth fighting for. It really is.
Okay. I guess I'll, I'll just say, to some degree, it's been our choice as a town. To, to remain a small town. In the years since, you know, the substantial growth from, of UMass happened. Johanna?
I guess I was just gonna, like I. I think thinking through Doug's line of reasoning makes a lot of sense, because if a bunch of time and energy is going to. Put into simply making a statement. That won't actually move anything. That feels. And it. Might not be a good look, then it doesn't feel like a very efficient use of time. So. I mean, like, I don't know, like the odds that they're going to carve Amherst out of the state law is, it just seems incredibly far fetched to me. And so. I don't know, it, it all feels a little. Like a decision has been made at a larger level than we are and. We. Yeah, I mean, we could kick and scream for, you know, the next six months and put together statements and comments, but to what end?
Okay, Jesse.
Thanks. I don't think the planning board as a unit has to make a statement. But. I also don't want Amherst to look like Alston. I understand nothing has been done in the last many years, it's been a conversation, but now we're here and we should try and do something if. We're so moved. That's why we're, that's certainly why I'm on planning board. I assume that's why you're all on planning board. Right? And if we disagree, fine, that's the votes are for, but. I, I do think it's appropriate to, to push and do whatever we can. What's, what's the look we're worried about? Who's going to say? Oh, Amherst, they're, they're so lame because they tried. To do what they thought was right for their planning. Like, okay, so what? I, I mean, personally, I don't think that matters, but yeah.
Nate?
Sure, I was gonna say that. You know, if a planning board member and wanted to work with staff to come up with comments or things that could be reviewed at the next meeting on the 8th. It still has time to be. Submitted. Before the close of the comment period on the 10th. And so. You know, you could, you, you know, there can be comments submitted individually. You know, I'd emailed staff to say, would staff want to get together and submit any comments? Not, not necessarily say what the planning board is discussing, but you know, even just like clarifications on the regulations. And so. You know, like I said, you know, how they calculate square feet and what does it mean by non-conformity? Or pre-existing non-conforming and so some technical stuff. But if the board wants to, I mean, we could put together, you know, bullet points or. Or something that could be reviewed at the next meeting and that might be worthwhile. Jesse or Bruce, if there's data that we could be included in that. The comment form isn't available online, but I'm assuming. It's going to be something similar to what we'd have on our website where it's just a. A text box. And you would input dat, input your text. I'm not sure. If we can submit attachments with it. And then we would just submit it to the state. And so. I just tried a minute ago and it, it doesn't work because it says it's not available yet, but. For other programs, they use just a really simple. Kind of comment form. And sometimes they don't allow attachments. And so. I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be something where we just copy and paste some, something from like, you know. Microsoft Word, for instance, and just put it online and submit.
Okay. Yeah, so Bruce, maybe rather than drafting a final document. If you have your sort of bullet points or data of. Things that make Amherst exceptional. Maybe share them with Nate. It sounds like he's offering to. Put, put everything together for us.
I'll do that.
Thank you, Nate. Fred?
Yeah, I just wanted to, on our packet today. Was the housing production plan. Which. Has an extraordinary amount of data in it. And I would suggest to. All of you that. That's where we can get some of the, some of the data that would go into. How to address this. I, I quite agree that. It can't be framed as. Just, it, it, it's got to be framed in a way that applies generally. And not a way that. Somehow says that. Amherst has to be treated differently, even though we are different. I, I completely agree, but there's a way to. There, I, there is a way to structure that so that. What we would propose would be generic and yet be of. Limited application to our situation. Just my thoughts, as I was going through that housing production plan, I was thinking, wow. There is, all the data is, is in there.
Okay. Great. So I guess I think we're toward the end of our ADU discussion for tonight. So everybody send. Send your. Proposed comments to Nate. All right, time is nine o'clock and we can move on to our general housing discussion agenda item. Nate, you want to start with the housing needs assessment?
Yeah, Fred had the good segue there, so. You know, the consultant is still. Working on the needs assessment and there'll be. A public meeting in early January where they'll. You know, have a workshop to help generate ideas for goals and strategies for the housing production plan. There was about 430 surveys. Submitted for the, this plan, and then there's been comments submitted. On the needs assessment. So I mean, tonight I wasn't necessarily going to run through the assessment. I think, you know, what I'd say is if there was any. I think what I said in the emails, if board members have comments or anything you'd want to send to me or be, you know. Tomorrow or Friday. And then if there's something discussed tonight, I would just forward it on to the consultants to have them incorporate it into the needs assessment. And so. You know, staff has already communicated with them. You know, for instance, we thought they're, they could try to find other data, data sources. To corroborate some of the information. Or, you know, use other information as proxies. Sometimes the 2020 census information, we feel like was a little askew, given the pandemic and. What was happening at the time. And then they changed the long form, so some of the information isn't as compatible with the previous forms. So they're aware of that. We provided some pretty detailed comments in terms of, you know, specific paragraphs, but I think for the board, if you. You know, if there's anything we want to discuss tonight, or please send me, I, you know, I'd also say, please send me emails. It can just be. You know, bulleted points and I'll take it all and send it on to the consultant. I think it'll be good. For them to hear from the planning board. You know, if there's any, anything specific, if you've marked up a copy, you can bring it to town hall and we can scan it and forward it to them. But, you know, I think, you know, in the next, you know, week or so, it'd be great to get them comments on this. So that's all.
Okay. Bruce?
Along with the assessment plan document, the 75 page document. I also got a, a, a word document that allowed me to insert comments and so forth. And. So that would be the form that, that's the form that I've chosen. So I just forward that to you, Nate, that would be what I should do with it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. Johanna?
Thanks. Nate, I have a, it seemed to me like the housing needs assessment was, it presented a bunch of really great stats and information about where we are today and where we've come from and a little bit in terms of projections for the future, but it didn't actually make recommendations. Is that intentional or can you just share a little bit more about the purpose of the document and yeah, like who the target audience is and what it should be used for? Cause that would help me craft.
Yeah, the needs assessment is, you know, really like one chapter within the housing or one section within the housing production plan. So then there will be, you know, um, kind of a, a goals and strategy section, a recommendation section for what Amherst could do to meet the needs. So although it is kind of long, I mean, I'm envisioning that when it's done, the town's housing production plan will be, you know, like a hundred and twenty page document. And this needs assessment is, you know, section two of the plan. So I think there's, you know, five major sections and this is one section of those five. So, but yeah, I mean, you know, some of the staff's comments were to the consultant, like, I read it and there's a lot of information, but I don't have like the takeaway points. I don't know actually what the needs are. For instance, for a certain demographic or income level or something, it's there, maybe. And they, and the consultant said, well, it's gonna be in another section. They said typically in the needs assessment, they present the information and then they synthesize it and say maybe um, do projections in another section. So um, they, they say they're working on it. Um, but you know, I'm still kinda left with as, you know, Greg, the housing planner and I were saying like, well, where's the PowerPoint presentation from this? Like if someone said, okay, let's just distill the information to some relevant needs, what are they? And you know, I, I mean, I'm kinda like, I don't know, I'm, I'm still waiting for that, like, you know?
Well, that'll be in the executive summary.
That's what they said, but you know, uh, in our, in our current or in our previous housing production plan, what was done in two thousand thirteen, the way it was structured, you could read the needs assessment and whether it was like a summary point at the beginning of the subsections or something, it it highlighted some of the, the data you were gonna be reading. And so you know, for instance, I felt the needs assessment spent a lot of time talking about zoning. But it didn't say like, well, what's the implication from that zoning? So to me, the need is like, okay, we have a lot of water and sewer in town. But for instance, we still have a lar- large lot zoning and that covers half of our town. And so when we did a drive around town with the consultants, they're like, why do you still have forty plus thousand square feet lots when you only, when you have water and sewer, you only need twenty thousand square feet, right? Could you have smaller lots to allow more density in your single family neighborhoods in certain residential districts like? And so I was kind of hoping that some of that synthesis would happen. I guess it'll happen in another section, but you know, that's all. It's like, okay, if renters are cost burden, that's great. Do we, do we have a little more granular data in terms of like maybe that household composition or they put some statistics and demographic information in the needs assessment? And then I'm like, well, what's the need? Like why mention, say same-sex couples or households if there isn't a specific need that is then addressed? I, I don't, to me, that's an irrelevant demographic unless there's a certain need. You know, if, if we wanna know about the need of different age groups, sure, or household versus renters, but I, I know. So all these things staff has communicated, but if the board members find something that's like, you know, you're still missing, you want to have some more information or data or I think it needs to have some other points made, send me those comments. Um, you know, it sounds like Bruce used the form. I think that's great. I had marked up a, I did it the old school way and just wrote on the actual report and so I'm busy putting it on the form because you know, I don't know if they really wanna flip through seventy pages of my scribbles, but.
Okay. Jesse?
Thanks. Uh, I'm a little torn to even say some of this, mostly because the data's off the twenty twenty census and I think things may have shifted quite a bit because that was basically pandemic time, but in any case, the data is great in a lot of ways. What I was gonna raise and Nate, I'll try and go through it and send you some specifics. If anyone has it open, one clear example is page eight where they're talking about population age and just to highlight one potential moment from our previous conversation, Amherst has fifty-three point seven percent of our residents between eighteen and twenty-four. Fifty-three point seven percent. Massachusetts has ten point one percent. So I bet money, there's almost nowhere else in Massachusetts that has fifty-three point seven percent of that age population. In any case, they mentioned that different areas of Amherst that varies a lot. And I would love to see that. I'm sure many of us would love to see that type of granular data also, which they have, which is very difficult for someone like me to put together. So if they can show that by neighborhood for us, I think that's really helpful for a planning board particularly. Um, just as we start to think about overlay and zoning and whatever, right? Um, and I'll, I'll try and mark up some other spots for you and send it to you Nate as well.
No, that, I mean, that's really helpful to have, right? So it's like, if they, if they say that and, and then we can, they can, you know, just go a little further with it, right? That becomes a lot more informative than just kind of.
Okay. Uh, at this point, I don't see any other hands either from board members or the public. I know we have, we still have a few participants, a few attendees, about six. Uh, okay, I guess we'll, we'll move on and send your comments to Nate. Nate, is there a deadline for those?
Um, you know, I'd say a week from today.
Okay.
A great date, but um, you know,
We can, we can finish him up on Christmas Day.
Yes.
Okay.
You know, I'll, I'll just, you know, I can send them individually or I'll compile them and send them on the, to the consultants through email. Yeah. And that's fine. And you know, one thing we talked about, we had a meeting with them today. The housing production plan, it's a state plan. Communities will submit it and it'll be approved um, by the state because it meets all their guidelines. And then if it's, then if you meet the unit production requirement, you get certified and then you have some protections against forty B. We're not necessarily doing that to, you know, to try to protect us against a comprehensive permit application, but if you have an approved plan, it helps communities with grant applications. And so you know, we've asked them to do a little bit more than just a standard housing production plan. The state will say that, you know, you have to produce half of one percent of your year-round housing units each year for five years to meet your production goal. And we said, well, we'd like to know actually what the need is that they've determined and then actually say what we think the unit production is. Not just based on some, you know, formulaic thing from the state, but if we think that there really is, you know, four hundred housing units needed for seniors, then that's what we wanna know. If, if we need housing for um, smaller household sizes, kind of what is that need? You know, if we need it for, you know, households with school-aged children, what is that need? And so not just, you know, half of one percent is, you know, four hundred units a year, it'd be nice to have a little bit more kind of tailored information for the town. And so yeah.
Okay. All right, uh, time is nine eleven and we'll move on. Nate, you had two items more under housing discussion, the definition of the student house, student home and the potential overlay for existing apartment complexes. Do you want to talk about those tonight?
No, I'll punt. Um, the, the housing subcommittee had, you know, talked about both of these. I think a student home definition, there were some changes, um, minor changes I'd sent to staff. I think staff can still look at that and you know, whether or not it's within the ADU section, I think it's something that, you know, we could still look at as a planning board and as staff, just to see, you know, if there's a place for it. Um, with the apartment complex overlay, the housing subcommittee likes this idea, you know, something about a little over ten years ago, the zoning subcommittee and staff had said, you know, given the existing uh, areas in town that have multi-unit development, could there be an overlay to allow, you know, you know, a, a big increase in density, whether it's like three, four, or five times as much to incentivize infill development. The comprehensive housing market study from two thousand fifteen, the consultant recommended it. Uh, and other, others have said something similar. And so I think the subcommittee is gonna look at it a little bit more. There are some documents from that time that could um, you know, be updated and then maybe turn into another discussion, kind of like U-Drive overlay where maybe it becomes a zoning amendment. You know, I think it's a good time. Uh, you know, I think some of those apartment complexes and areas are probably getting to a point where they need some uh, capital improvements given their age. And so maybe if we have this, again, it's an opportunity. You know, it might not be used, you know, maybe twice, but if, you know, as someone said at the housing subcommittee, if one property uses it and we triple the density, you know, that's a number of units that we don't have otherwise. And so yeah, I, I think it's just something that the subcommittee will look at. I think it's, I think it's an interesting idea. And it's something that has been discussed over the years. It's just never kind of made it far enough.
Yeah, I mean, since we've uh, you know, we're kind of partway through University Drive, that seems like the the next logical thing to talk about before, you know, pick off all the easy ones before we get to any conversations about existing single-family areas. Cause that's probably politically explosive. Bruce?
Um, the, as I understand, this is not so much about existing single-family areas, although it is in zones and so forth, but it's these uh, um, estates or uh, multifamily housing developments that uh, and, and the, the instructive example, it seems to me, perhaps this is because I live in North Amherst. Uh, the university apartments, I think it used to be called North Village or so, but in very recent years was uh, over a two-year or a period was wholly redeveloped. It was redeveloped from a a rather pedestrian uh, to one and two-story development into another rather pedestrian new one and two-story development. I mean, it seemed like a huge opportunity lost. And so uh, it just seems that we really should try to take advantage of these places where uh, high, higher, much higher density housing could be done with very little adverse impact, it seems, and to a great positive advantage. Uh, particularly given the circumstances we're in, we've been discussing these would be University Drive. So uh, it does seem to be uh, a, a good opportunity and the university apartments on uh, North Pleasant Street seems to be the sanitary example of of, of what, what could have been done differently if we hadn't, if we hadn't been more proactive on this.
All right. Okay, so Nate, anything else on those two topics?
Nope.
Okay. All right, moving on, it's nine fifteen. Uh, old business, topics not reasonably anticipated, forty-eight hours in advance, anything?
I don't have anything.
Nope, okay. How about same, whoops, Karen?
Um, you know, I wanted to just comment on whether at any point, what, what does the planning board do about a letter such as that from Rita Wilcox suggesting that we take up the issue of trying to slow down traffic on Amity and she worded it so well and the implications. Is that something that the planning board can have any part in or should she just address it to someone else?
Well, uh, I know my, my thought was that that really belonged with DPW. Uh, the folks that manage our roads. And I, I shared that with Nate. Nate, what did you think?
We forwarded it on to um, different staff and departments. And so you know, that comment letter will, you know, or email was circulated. You know, whether it's an old business or new business, it could be that, you know, I think Karen, you had at one point, you know, someone said, oh, could we talk about, say other, something else? So maybe this, it becomes, you know, maybe it becomes a future agenda item, you know, looking at traffic calming. It could be specifically to Amity or in general. You know, Jesse, for instance, has sent me something about, you know, McCollum Street a while ago and I forwarded it on to Public Works and others, uh, Town Council, Town Manager's Office. And so you know, I think sometimes what happens though with those comments is it, you know, you never know if it lives somewhere and how it gets responded to. So um, you know, you know, it might just go into the ether and then it just, you know, disappears. But um, I thought it was, you know, it made some nice points. And so you know, I don't know if it's something the planning board would wanna just have as a future agenda item in terms of, you know, just general traffic calming or things like that. I, I, I do think it's not necessar- it, it is a planning issue, but it, it, you know, it's a lot, to me, it's more relevant with Public Works, but maybe there's somebody, you know, some synergy that could happen there if the planning board discusses it.
Yeah, so I think it would be nice if we ever are not overloaded to put calming traffic as an agenda item for the planning board to discuss too. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Uh, any new business, not any, or other new business not reasonably anticipated?
I don't have any.
Okay.
Um, we, we do Nate, we have a little bit about um, sorry guys, I don't have much voice left. Um, we're actually taking a look at and establishing a new way of collecting public comment that will be more consistent with the way that the town council does it. Um, there's a placeholder for it now on the website, on the planning board's page. So it's being created in the background and what we hope is to be able to put this new system live in January. So there'll be more to come on that, but a couple of things that will happen is, is that number one, planning board members will just automatically get these public comments. Um, so they won't necessarily come from staff anymore. It will also make um, redaction of information. Um, something else that's done behind the scenes, so that will not be posted any longer. Four public planning board members will still see that information, but in the way that it becomes posted on the website, it won't, that, those portions won't.
What, what, what portion will be redacted? The, the name of the sender or what?
Well, a sender will have the choice to give what they want the name to be that's associated with the comment. Um, but so there won't be any personal information, like email is the big one.
I see.
Yep. So that's all in the works. Like I said, there is a placeholder, you know, and a little announcement coming soon. Um, and as we put it, you know, finalize all these things. Hopefully it will just be a really nice, smooth transition. Like I said, we're basically mimicking what the town council already has in place. They've, um, their staff liaise has been really generous in offering support in this way. So hopefully it'll just be a really nice, smooth transition. Um, and so we have that to look forward to in January.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Form A and R subdivision applications, I believe we had one, right?
We do.
One or two, maybe?
Just one.
So yeah, I can, while Pam's getting ready, it's the Jewish community of Amherst down on Main Street. They're um, they have two properties. It, it, you know, they've, at one point, maybe there was more, but they're essentially through the N and R, you know, combining all the, the property into one. And so they're not, you know, they're, they will eliminate an interior lot line, but there are no new um, exterior property boundaries being, being formed.
So I'm actually gonna, go ahead.
Go ahead, Pam.
No, I was just gonna say, I'm gonna show you the GIS map because I think it's easier than the actual site plan to see it. Um, and I will just preface this whole conversation with, I did hear from the town engineer today that he has signed this um, without any comment. So he's, he is okay with this as it is. So what's outlined in yellow is one parcel. What's outlined in blue is parcel number two. Um, and so this line right here is gonna go away. They own both properties. So they're just gonna combine it. They're taking two parcels and making it into one.
Okay.
Very straightforward.
Yep. So board members, is there any objection to my signing this on behalf of the board? All right, I don't see any, anybody, any hands or any gestures that indicate you object, so. All right, we'll move on from there. How about ZBA applications, anything? How about ZBA applications? Anything interesting coming up, Pam?
Um, I don't have anything to report. Nate, do you?
Uh, you know, Wayfinders will hopefully, uh, wrap up their comprehensive permit, um, review in January. Uh, Shute's Berry Road Solar, you know, is, is, uh, is coming back. Um. Uh, the ZBA is pretty busy. I mean, there's other, there's, there's, you know, um, you know, projects where, you know, in terms of. Smaller properties and then, you know, there's these bigger ones. Um, Polpitt Hill Road Solar is one. Uh, where they had proposed batter- battery energy storage system, you know, a best associated with the solar. And the utility company wanted it closer to Montague Road. And so they're essentially. You know, putting the battery storage system, um, on the same property, but closer to Route sixty-three. And so I think the ZBA will be looking at that. Um, you know, the town. The CRC and staff have been working on a solar bylaw, so it's not quite a bylaw yet. It's like what happened with University Drive. They've been discussing it for a long time and then at some point it'll, you know, go to council and then be referred back as an official zoning amendment. Uh, the state's been reviewing some of those, you know, um, there's been some news about local communities with their bylaws. And so. The town's working on a, a, a solar bylaw. Uh, the idea would be to have a second bylaw for a batter- battery energy storage systems, which we haven't developed yet. Um, so, you know, I think the ZBA has a few of those applications coming. Um. You know, uh, I, they're all, they're, it's, it's kind of interesting, you know, the technology's even changed in the last year or two, so fire. Gets involved. Most of these are, you know, Conservation Commission has reviewed those as well. Um, and then the ZBA will look at those too. So, um, there's one proposed on one sixteen. Two, a battery, battery storage system where, um, you know, right south of Bubs, that might need to come back to the ZBA. So. Uh, you know, tho- those are kind of bigger projects. And the ZBA is busy with, you know, simple, you know, not simple things, but things like, oh. You know, converting a two-family to a three, you know, to a three-family, you know, in their usual order of business. I mean, they, they. Have meetings, you know, fall through the next two or three months, but.
Okay. Um, coming, uh, SPP, SPR, S U B applications. Anything?
Yeah, um, uh. I don't know when, some point this past year, Archipelago Investments had. Applied to the, uh, zoning board for variance to develop the properties around Atkins with, um, you know, uh. A pretty big development. Um, and that, that didn't move forward, you know, so Hampshire College had put out, I think, like a request for a proposal. Essentially asking for a developer to have some proposals for what could happen with the two properties they own down there around Atkins. And Archipelago has been working with them to come up with a plan for, you know, mixed-use buildings, um, there. And so. Uh, you know, that will probably be moving forward in the next few months, where they'll be submitting a site plan review application. And, you know, it'll probably be for a pretty big development, um, you know. Um, a few hundred, maybe a few hundred units, you know. Mixed-use space, parking, it'll, it'll be a big, big project, but.
It's, it's outside the educational use center?
It is, it's, uh, BBC zoning. And so, you know, the town designated that a village center a number of years ago. It's been BBC zoning for, gosh, maybe fifteen plus years and those parcels having vacant, you know, on Lannan Way. Gould Lane or whatever they are down there. And so it's, uh. They're owned by, um, you know, like a subsidiary of Hampshire College, so they're not EDZ-owned. They're BBC-zoned and then, you know, they'd be able to be developed as, uh, you know, mixed-use buildings. In conformance with the zoning. So it is a tricky site. There's, um, topography, there's wetlands. Being an old orchard, there, I think there's arsenic and, uh, contamination of the soil. So it is a tricky site to develop. Um. The idea is to try to get, you know, some housing there. The town designated it a village center a number of years ago, uh, many years ago. Um, so, you know, like some of it'll be, just wait to see what it looks like.
Okay. Okay, committee and liaison reports. Bruce, anything else for PVPC?
Uh, not really. Uh, I think you've had most of what I had learned, except I got two nuggets, which I thought I would share. One was, uh, I heard that. The first quantum computing in, uh, facility. In the whole of the country is apparently landing in Hollyoak, uh, in the not-too-distant future, which I. Didn't know what to think about, but it seemed, I was curious anyway, so I'm just passing that along. And the second little nugget was, uh, I heard that the ridership on the, uh, Amtrak line that goes north through Northampton. That branch has increased thirty percent recently. I don't know what the time period is, but let's say recently. But, uh, it was apparently, uh, the, the, one of the biggest or the biggest jump in ridership. In the whole of the Amtrak, uh, national network. I thought you might be interested in that too.
Great.
That's it.
Okay. Jesse, Housing Subcommittee.
Yeah, thanks. Um, that was much of our conversation tonight already, so we'll go back over all those things. Uh, we met yesterday. Um. Talked a lot about you. implications of the law and changes. Um, we also decided that we'd like to. Put sign together to bring to full planning board on the increasing density of the existing apartment multi-use zone. So we're meeting in January twice. We're gonna work on that. As Nate said, the old documents, try and get them in shape to then bring something to the full board to talk about. Um, the other thing we decided to think a bit more about. Is Fino M, um, and maybe suggesting that go back up to six thousand square feet rather than the current four thousand. And or just simplifying some of the zoning language in the current bylaw so that. Uses and limits are a little more clear. So that's the other big topic we're gonna try and. Give some attention to in our next couple of meetings. Um, since it's not. Clear where it comes out, I thought I'd just say here, so maybe it could be in the minutes, that our next meetings are January fourteenth. Eleven, lunchtime meeting again, eleven thirty to one, and January twenty. Eight, sorry, let me just double check that, with that right. Twenty-nine, January fourteenth and January twenty-ninth, eleven thirty to one. You're all, of course. Welcome to join us.
Okay. Um, I have one small question, which is about your minutes.
I, I. Yes.
Since we had a couple of years ago, we were in trouble with the Attorney General because we were behind. Um, how is that going?
A little behind. We've had one set approved. We have two more sets in the works. We're, we're getting better. Yes, we're aware we need to do it and we will.
Okay, all right, well. Um, great. Okay, um, next would be DRB, Karen.
Yes, speaking of minutes, I wrote it all up yesterday, Jesse, and then somehow it got deleted and it's crazy. But anyway, uh, the design review meeting, one thing that I have also a nugget, that means that the Oyster Bar is. Finally opening in February. And tomorrow is something called Stroll and Sip. At Protocol and they will be previewing, I think, some of the things that are to come at the Amherst, at the Oyster Bar. So that's exciting. And the other thing is that we did finally, um, approve. Our revisions of the standards, uh, that the design review. Board uses and that was pretty complicated because a lot of the. Things are very subjective, but I think, uh, we're happy with the result and soon you'll see it. So.
Okay, thanks, Karen. Uh, Report of Chair, let's see, all I have to say is it's been another calendar year and thanks for. Uh, getting through with me. Thank you. Um, hope next year is just as productive as this year. I feel like we've made some good headway on, at least at University Drive. Um, Nate, Pam, anything on Report of Staff?
You know, Pam covered the idea about public comments, so, you know, we can talk more about that in January. Um, you know, I mentioned that the downtown design standards is still ongoing. Um, Dodson and Flinker. Uh, staff met with them about two weeks ago. I think they have a really good understanding of. Uh, kind of the, their study area and how it breaks down in terms of different kind of character and architecture. Uh, you know, they, they have a working group and they really like to try to have a consensus building model. There was a recent article in the paper about that. About the process and, um, project. So I think they're making, you know, progress, um. And then, you know, the idea would be that it's still gonna be a number of months before. Uh, something is ready, but the planning board would be involved and other boards in reviewing, you know, draft guidelines, whether it's for the streetscape or for the building. Runs and, um. Yeah, and so like a year from now would be great, you know, they're, they could, you know, the idea would be it's completed and. You know, in their standards, uh, we have to decide how to move forward with those. And so some of it could be that what they recommend. In terms of, say, sidewalk widths or other things needs to then be, um. Implemented through a zoning change. And so I think out of the downtown design standards process. We, you know, we will change the zoning, either incorporating those standards by reference and then also possibly changing some dimensional standards or other things. Um, and in terms of the designer review board, you know, there's, you know, I think it's a good discussion about. You know, do these standards then replace the designer review principles in the zoning bylaw, or do they add to them? And how are they used, uh, both the current principles and then the new standards? And so. You know, we don't have to talk about it tonight, but it's something I think that next year can be a discussion. Um. I don't really have any, you know, anything else. I think, um, you know, the housing production plan is ongoing. I think in January we'll probably bring. The goals and objectives to the revised open space and rec plan. So staff has been slowly working on that. We hope to get that completed. Uh, this winter or early spring. Um. Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay, Bruce?
Doug, I just want to thank you for another year of, uh, great leadership. Uh, thank you. And, and Nate and Pam, and I would include Chris, but she's not in the meeting anymore. But. To you two, thank you very much as well. Happy holidays to Mr. Chair and to you two and I guess.
Yeah.
The rest of us.
No, no meeting next Wednesday.
No meeting next Wednesday. Hallelujah.
All right, the time is nine thirty-five and we are done for the year.
See you next year.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. All right.
Good night.
Good night.